With that, you may be seated. We will have a roll call in members' place.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kirby at large.
Here.
Okay, thank you ma'am. With that, we'll have approval of the agenda and the stars going to.
We need to add the V-DOT project pipeline and make that item 10B.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks ma'am. Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's a move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, motion carried. Next item, approve the minutes from our February 2nd meeting. If you had a chance to look at those, hope you have, do we have a motion to approve those minutes for that date?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Mr. Herron made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, motion carried. The minutes for February the 3rd, do we have a motion? I think you weren't here, Ms. Ruby, is that correct? You wasn't here, yes. Anyway, we have a motion to approve the minutes for February the 3rd.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ruby, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you abstained, Ms. Hood.
Yes, I abstained, absolutely.
Okay, that's okay. Next item is Assistant Expression Period, and I will read this short statement. Assistant Expression Period is appointed meeting. Anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium. State your name, where you're from, and the county, and what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up, does anyone sign up to start?
Ms. Lana Mullins.
Okay. We have no particular order as she speaks, she may come. We just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close Assistant Expression. So. Ms. Lana. We are in, she's not here. Okay, anyone else who wishes to speak, the board may do so. Anyone? No one wants to speak, that's unusual. All right, we'll come out Assistant Expression Period. We'll move right along. Next item is a public hearing. It's to abandon Route 720 from 625 to the Tennessee State Line, a distance of .5 miles, and Route 757 from .85, five miles south of US 58, US 421, to .58 miles south of US 58, US 421, distance of .27 miles. With that, we'll go into the public hearing on this possible banning of the drugs. Anyone who wishes to speak during this public hearing.
Talking about this item here?
Yes.
I would like to speak.
Come forward, please.
All right. My name's Tim Chambers, and we have a farm at the end of Route State 720 off of 525.
Okay.
And I was just, the other two homeowners or landowners aren't here with us, me and my brother are.
Okay.
But we're all in agreement that we'd like for y'all to abandon that part and let us take over that three quarters of a mile.
Okay.
Because we've basically just got a lot of people using that road to come in and poach and fish and do whatever they want on private properties.
And which one was that?
State Road 720, or Route 720.
I got you right, yeah.
Basically, that's all I have to say, because my family's been there since 1972. And I couldn't count on hands and toes how many people we've run off over the years. And not to say that the world's bad, but.
I hear you.
They come down a lot.
I hear you.
And I thank you for your time.
Can you bring it up on Google Earth, Bill?
Yes, sir. The road that he's referring to is our 911 Road, Musky Lane, that leads Angler's Way right here, and travels along the edge of these fields, and the edge of this hillside, and enters into Tennessee along this point here. When we went down to post the notices, it was, looked like a farm road that you would see going through a field on a farm. Like it hadn't been maintained by the state in some way.
Thanks, sir. All right, is there any discussion on that from here on the, anyone else wants to speak during this public hearing? Anyone? All right, that will come out in the public hearing. Ms. Hood, I talked to you last night, was it 757 you were talking about that you said you went and looked at?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And go ahead, if you would, and speak about what we talked about last night.
Okay, for 757, we haven't gotten much input into abandoning that road. The family or the couple who sent an email to ask that it be abandoned have not supplied us with additional information. I asked them to come before the board, and they have not been here. And I drove out there, and it was a little confusing. I did see a couple mailboxes, and I don't know if other people live there, or, you know, what the situation. It was just very confusing. So, at this time, I don't think we should plan to abandon that. I think we need more information before we make the decision on that.
Well, this is one quarter of a mile, so not a whole lot of road there, but you said you went and looked at it.
No, no, but there were other houses, like I saw a double-eyed trailer, and then I saw the house of the couple who, you know, made the request. So I don't really know, you know, about the other housing there. I mean, do other people live there? But we just need to hear, I think, that's my opinion, we need to hear more about that.
Were they contacted about this, they know about what we're doing, people that has the property of?
We posted notices on this section of road as well. I have it up on Google Earth. It went, the portion that was identified that was under consideration, went from along this barn area here, all the way back to this turnaround where there's an end of state maintenance sign. You can see the houses that are along it, and it's a tarred rebel road. It's been improved at some point.
There again, I don't know, like, where it says state maintenance ends.
Yeah, that's right.
What is across that ridge, you know, I don't know if there's anything up there, or other landowners, or?
Yeah, there's some logging activity that was going on in this valley here. You know, could be a site for a future housing development, or what have you.
Obviously, V-DOT won't abandon that, I mean, to me, that probably shouldn't be abandoned, but I don't know.
Well, see, that's what we don't know, I mean, this couple requested that, you know, we abandon it, and.
Can we split this out silently and just abandon one, like the other?
Yes, you had three different resolutions on your tablet. The first one was if you did both, and then they were split out.
Right.
So you could do just the abandonment for Musky Lane. I handed out another resolution that if you decided today not to abandon this one, you could pass it. But if you want to wait and try to get more information about that one, you don't have to do that one today, but within four months, I think, of this public hearing.
I was hoping they would be here today to give us more information, but, you know, that's not the case. But I will contact them and tell them, you know, that we've decided not, well, if we do decide not to abandon it, that, you know, we just need more information. They need to come and tell us about why they want it abandoned, and the total situation.
I agree, I agree with Selma. I took a Saturday and drove to both places. I was really confused, there was snow on the ground that day, and there's a staging area at the end of that road there where they logged. And there's another road that, on this picture, it turns left and goes up through these woods. And that's what had me confused, I was in a Honda, couldn't go up through there. I don't know why they would want to abandon that at this point. I think we do need more information. And as far as the one down on the Clinch River, that's a beautiful spot, I came down there too. And I was, again, in a Honda, drove all the way down to the gate. My wife, I had to back out, and she put her purse on her lap and goes and went over the bank.
We don't lock it, they just keep coming in.
That's no problem, I'm used to roads like that. But I agree, we should abandon that just for the people that live down there. And I was still a bit with the law down there, a lot of trespassers, man.
Over the years, it's been amazing. The newest neighbor had a vehicle stolen out of that, you noticed the big barn, as you?
Oh, yeah, I did.
He's been, he's up from Florida, got a trailer ride up the river, but he was storing a four-wheeler in there, and it was gone.
Yeah, I can understand how someone could get out of there with just about anything.
Well, we can do this Route 720, and then leave the other one and see what happens. As Ms. Kegley said, we got a few months to do this. So, any other discussion on 720? Do not we entertain a motion to approve this resolution, banning Route 720, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. You said made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, motion carried. So, anyway, that was done, and we'll bring the other one up in a month or so, long keeping in that deadline that Ms. Kegley referred to. All right. Next item's item eight.
Thank you.
You, officer. Thank you. Next item is Suzanne Kearney from the National Vietnam War Veterans Day Resolution. We have that on our tablet, hope you have a chance to look at it. Is she here? You would, please.
It's in your extra packet.
Okay.
Good morning, I think we're allowing you a few minutes to be on Virginia this morning. My name is Suzanne Kearney, and I am a resident of Scott County, and I'm also a member of the Corps of Soldiers of the American Revolution. And I'm here on their behalf today asking that the Board of Supervisors consider entering a proclamation declaring March 29th henceforth as a perpetual remembrance and day to honor and remember the great patriots who served in the United States, who were in the Vietnam War. In 2017, the Congress of the United States enacted the Vietnam Veterans Recognition Act, which set forth the perpetual day of remembrance, set on March 29th to remember and honor Vietnam veterans. In addition to celebrating and commemorating the 50th anniversary of the conclusion of that war, which extends through 2025. This year, for the first time, in Scott County, we will be hosting a special day of celebration to honor and remember Vietnam War-era veterans. And that period of service extends from 1955 through the end of the conflict in 1975. We'll be hosting that on March 29th in conjunction with the local chapter of the Gold Star Mothers of America, to honor and remember Vietnam War veterans who served during that period. So it's with that in mind that I prepared and presented a proposed proclamation for the Board of Supervisors' consideration that sets forth, henceforth, a perpetual day of remembrance on March 29th. And that's modeled from the language that's included in the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017, as well as a proclamation that was entered in Virginia that was all in specific that to 2019, the celebration on that day. So I appreciate your consideration of this request in addition to your time to be on Virginia this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I had scheduled someone to come and speak, a Vietnam veteran, and it's my brother. And I talked to him last night, he was coming, and this morning, he said I'm going to VA after I talked to him, and the stuff in Ukraine is bothering him, and he couldn't come. Anyway, he has a unique story to tell, and what's ironic about him? He got a Silver Star for hand-to-hand combat in Vietnam. And up to that point, he was the only one that had taken a weapon in hand-to-hand combat from the enemy. The most ironic part is him being from Dunggannon, and that was a young man, Lawson from Nicholsville, they were together. I think he got one from Dunggannon, the one from Nicholsville together, and my brother is literally taking a gun from the enemy, and the boy from Nicholsville bailed him out and took care of business. I wanted both to come, and it didn't work out, but how ironic was that, that happened? And he ended up, he had used that weapon, so AK-47, that's his own, for the three days he was out in the field, his gun was damaged. That gun is in a museum in Fort Carson, Colorado. And so, anyway, up to that point, he was the only one that had taken a gun in hand-to-hand combat, which is ironic, it really is, it does. And in doing so, he got a Silver Star, which, you've been a military guy, Marshal, you know, it's a pretty big honor to get that. And then when that happened, once he got decorated, he got to be on President Johnson's Honor Guard, and he'd get off and off the planes and all this stuff. He got to be there with the President after he got decorated. But he got credit for saving seven men's lives there when that happened. But anyway, I wanted to be here, but he couldn't. So, Vietnam War people, we honor them with this. And I wanted him to tell the story, not me, I really did. But he just, I talked to him at eight o'clock, and he said, I just can't do it. He's on his way to VA, he said, I'm all slept, he said, my heart's raced, he said, this Ukraine stuff is bothering me, and he said, I just can't do it. But anyway, if both of them had come, I believe they probably could have together. When I heard the stories 10 years after this happened, they were together in Gay City, and they were talking about what happened. That's how I found out the rest of the story, as to what happened to them. But how ironic is that? And one more funny thing, it is now, he was in a hospital in Saigon, his hands, he had third-degree burns on his hands, he held that gun, probably, it was that hot. And he was in a hospital in Saigon, and Tron Heston came to visit him, and he didn't know who he was. And he said, well, I'm Tron Heston, he said, I'm a movie star, I don't know who you are. And he said, have you seen The Ten Commandments? He said, I've read, and he said, no, the movie, Ten Commandments? He said, no. And so, anyway, it's a funny story, afterwards a fact, but anyway, we got people that rarely get recognized. And so this, I think, is a great resolution for us to approve here this morning. The last part is, I'll read this into the record, it says, "We're at the desire of the Board of Supervisors of Scott County, Virginia, to show their continued public support and appreciation of patriotic service of members of the armed forces. We now therefore do hereby recognize March 29th as Vietnam War Veterans Day, Scott County, Virginia, and call this observance to the annual attention of all our citizens." So, I think we need to do this, and I'd like to make the motion that we approve this.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, proposed, motion carried. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for coming and the presentation. All right. Next is the architects from Courthouse Space Needs Studies, so, an interesting topic. Everybody pentes, because this is a pretty good deal in Scott County, so, anyway. Thank you all for doing what you do, you worked hard, again, as we get it, of course.
Thank you, sir. Chair member, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Tony Bell, I'm the most, the architect, with me today is Andrew McMan, he serves as our project manager for the project. We're really here to give you an update, answer any questions you might have, as we continue to go through the process of being the Space Needs Study, and also the Facilities Master Plan. So, so that you understand what the two components are. The Space Needs Study defines quantitatively how much space is needed, how many square feet are needed by the different court stakeholders, the different components. Scott Services is also included in that, obviously, they're on your existing facility grounds now. So that's step one, knowing how much we need. Step two is, how are we going to achieve that need? And that's what the Facilities Master Plan is, to create an affordable, implementable plan that the county can then move forward toward meaning that space needs. So we're about 50% done, that means we're about done with the space needs, and we're moving into the conceptual development. So, we've already talked about introductions, we'll talk a little bit about the schedule and where we are with regard to that. We'll run through the Space Needs Assessment briefly, we'll run through some preliminary concepts. These are concepts we've developed on a big-picture scale, on different possibilities we see for development of your existing facilities and expansion and renovation thereof, and then we'll talk about next steps.
Tony?
Yes, sir. I'm good. Use these back. All right. So, Bill Dengus has been serving as our primary county contact, and obviously, we've had a lot of interaction with your different court stakeholders, that is, all the three different courts, Circuit General District, J and DR, as well as the combined clerk's office, that's the General District, and the J and DR Court. Beau, your Circuit Court Clerk, we've interviewed him, we've interviewed your Commonwealth attorney, Scott Services, and also the Sheriff's Office. So those compose all the different stakeholders, and who's got space and who needs space at the court facility. We're doing all the architectural, structural engineering, different building engineering services. Current profit is providing the civil engineering services, that's the surveying things outside of the buildings. And Danny Scott is assisting us with the construction cost estimating services. So again, the goal is to determine the quantity of space that's needed, that's the amount of space, and the quality, what do I mean by that? Well, the Virginia Courthouse Facilities Guidelines, that's this document here, published by the Supreme Court of Virginia, they kind of set the standard on how large different spaces should be. So, whether it's a J and DR Court versus a General District Court versus a Circuit Court, how large those facilities should be, how large the offices for the judges and the constitutional officers should be, so there's some sort of parity across the Commonwealth for different facilities. Now, obviously, all courtrooms are not the same, you know, Circuit has different needs because they have a jury box versus a J and DR courtroom, which is much smaller. There's only certain people who are allowed in a J and DR proceeding. So, those are taken into consideration when they set these space needs, and that's what we used as the basis for the development of your Space Needs Document. So we looked at your current need, we looked at your five, your 10, your 20-year need. There isn't a lot of growth here in Scott County. There's not a lot of caseload growth, there's not a lot of population growth. As a matter of fact, if you look at the Welton Cooper numbers, they're actually seeing a little bit of drop-off in your population over the future. But all that is taken into consideration when we look at these space needs. These are the different functions with whom we spoke, obviously, the Circuit Court and Clerk, General District Court. The General District Court and the J and DR Court Clerk are currently combined, and they've applied to the Supreme Court of Virginia, the General Assembly for the separation of those two, and that's a push that's happening across the Commonwealth, where you see the two court clerks combined today. We also talked with the Sheriff's Office, the Commonwealth's Attorney, and Scott Services. And these are the facilities that we looked at. Obviously, you've got your historic courthouse, which has been added on to several times, the decommissioned Annex Building, that's the old jail, old sheriff's office, that's currently vacated directly to the north of your historic courthouse. The old vacated jail building, that's where Scott Services is now. It also serves as the primary holding location for the Sheriff's Office and the detainees, and then the Judges' Chamber. That's the house for the former school that's right there on Jackson, nearly to the east of the courthouse. So our Space Needs Assessment started off with questionnaires completed by all of the different stakeholders. We then had a kickoff meeting, we received the completed questionnaires back, and we prepared caseload projections. And this is the culmination of that study. So all in, the need is about 65,000 square feet, okay? And currently, these functions occupy about 21,000 square feet, that's what you see. Bill, if you could highlight the box to the left-hand side, the first number, there you go, right there. So that number right there is the amount of space that these functions currently occupy in your court facilities. It's about 21,000 square feet, and your 20-year need is about 65,000 square feet. So the delta there is pretty significant, about 44,000 square feet of additional need that is required. And that's not only offices and courtrooms, that's also the circulation, the holding cells, vehicle Sallyport, all the different needs that are required. And courthouses are unique, as you probably well aware, because unlike most other buildings, it has three circulation paths, okay? Three circulation paths meaning the public, who come in the front door, the staff, who typically come in the back or rear entry, and the detainees. And ideally, those three circulation paths would stay separate and distinct and never cross, except for in one location, and that's the courtroom. So, obviously, that's not even going to be accomplished here in Scott County, yet. So, how do you manage that? You have to manage it operationally, in the Sheriff's Office, make sure these people, when they do circulate and their paths do cross, that no conflicts are created, whether those paths crossing be inside or outside. So that's one of the challenges we face together as we move forward with creating a solution. We want it to be safe, we want it to be secure, we want it to have sufficient space. We want it to meet the needs of both the courts, the citizens, as well as the other stakeholders. So we've put all the different breakouts here, and you can see the level of detail that we've provided. So every space that's needed in the courthouse is listed. We go through both personnel space, and then we go through support space. So this is the personnel space for the Circuit Court Clerk. You have two Judges' Chambers, each at 300 square feet. You have two Paralegals, each with a 64 square foot workstation. And then you have two administrative assistants. And I'm looking at the 20-year column, okay? The 2041 need. So, this is the support space, obviously, this is the courtrooms themselves for the Circuit Court. So all told, your total need for the Circuit Court is 7886. And you're currently occupying about 346, okay? So there's a pretty big space deficiency there. Again, I'm not going to run through every number, you've got it there, you've got a hard copy of it. Circuit Court Clerk, Circuit Court Clerk Support Space, Commonwealth Attorney. And the Commonwealth Attorney has seen the most growth over time. They're currently occupying about 2125. That's the column to the left there, square feet each under where it says existing occupied area. They currently occupy about 2125 square feet, and their 20-year need is about 5443. Why is that? Well, we've seen a pretty large change based on General Assembly legislation, as far as how cases can be tried. Okay, formerly, if you were the litigant, you had a choice of going either jury trial or judges' trial, okay? Making the decision for your case. And whoever you chose to try it would then also render the sentencing, okay? They're now giving those litigants the choice of, you could try it either way, but then you can also push it to the judge in terms of the sentencing, which is much more preferable, because typically, judges are more linear than juries, okay? What's that doing? It's pushing more jury trials, okay? So I'll be tried by my peers, but then when the sentencing comes, I'll go ahead and get the judge to sentence me. What does that mean with Commonwealth Attorney? More jury trials means more time, each trial is longer, okay? So you need more Commonwealth attorneys, assistant Commonwealth attorneys, to try these cases and push them through the system. So that's affecting their personnel space, that's affecting their support space. General District Court, you've currently got two judges, but they share a common chambers. So we're only going to have one chamber that would be shared by both. And you've got one courtroom for them. General District Court Clerk, again, they're currently combined, J and DR and General District, but in the future, they would become separated, that application has already been sent into the Supreme Court and General Assembly for that approval. And the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court, there's currently two judges that reside here in Scott County. They each have chambers, and then you have one judge that occasionally comes here, and they share a chamber. J and DR Court Clerk, again, we talked about that, that splitting, and they currently don't have any dedicated space just for J and And they currently don't have any dedicated space just for J and D R, everything is combined with general district. The sheriff's office obviously doesn't have hardly any space in the existing courthouse. They have the security checkpoint up front, which they've created a pretty good layout in terms of navigating in and monitoring the egress and ingress of the public and doing the security checkpoint, the x-ray machine, the magnetometer. But there's no holding cells in your existing courthouse. All that's being done in the vacated jail. And the detainees basically walk across the parking lot through the alley to go to one of the three courtrooms. That's a security concern. And something that, you know, best would be remediated moving forward. Scott Services provides a much-needed service here in Scott County. They have close ties to the court. It makes a lot of sense to maintain them on this campus. And we'll talk about some of the options we have for them moving forward. Their biggest space needs is space for meeting with clients. You know, they currently only occupy about eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Their need is well north of that, almost four thousand. And then, of course, we have some shared space. This is space used by all the different courts. Some shared conference rooms, public toilets, staff toilets, IT closets, things of that nature. So in terms of the parcels that Scott County currently owns, we understand that you own the jail parcel, the annex, former jail parcel, or former sheriff's office, then it's the courthouse. The parcel which is currently occupied by the former schoolhouse, current judges' office. We understand the county owns that, it's currently deeded as local government. And then you also own the parcel which is across Mandeville Road, which is currently a parking lot. We understand that the town and the county recently put together funding to repave that lot. So these are your land resources that are available. So again, our goal is to create an affordable, implementable facilities master plan to meet that twenty-year need. So we're moving forward with that space needs. It's been blessed by the stakeholders, it's been blessed by the county. And we're here to present to you today, see if you have any exceptions or have any comments on it. Chairman, I'll stop here in case there's any questions before we move forward with looking at some initial concepts. Any questions?
All this been mandated by the Supreme Court, and I hear this has to happen, correct?
Does not have to happen, no sir. It's not being mandated, you're not under court order, there's been no...
No, we could be.
You always could be, yes sir. You're aware of that. But as far as I know, there's not been one.
I met with three judges last summer, and they briefly described some of this, which your details obviously is much better, and the need. I mean, you're talking about three times bigger than what it is, twenty-one thousand will go to sixty-five thousand. I mean, that's three times bigger than what we are.
Yes, sir.
And to me, it's going to be a hard sell in this county to their taxpayers. I mean, talking about the debt, five times more than what we have now to do this. And so, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, I see a need that, you know, with the square footage that we have and the square footage that's needed. The old jail complex, that old stuff needs to be tore down anyway, I think. I've always said that needs to go. But you're all stopped here, I mean, a very detailed report, I mean, I like what you have up there, I really do. But you're all stopped here. Any questions, Frank?
At this point in time, I just wonder if there's any money that might be available out there from the feds or the state of Virginia. That's something that, you know, we might look into. I see the need too, Danny, and it's obvious, but like you say, it's going to be expensive.
Very expensive. Well, they're going to split the courts, and that's what those three judges told me. Juvenile domestic relations, circuit courts aren't going to be split, and it's going to come. It's just that it's one of the deals, pay me now, pay me later, it's going to come. And so, but I just hate to see the county go through this and to triple the size of what we already, the usable space we have right now.
Let's keep moving along. We've got some concepts to share with you, and that might generate some more discussion.
I hope. Good.
Okay.
You look good, by the way.
We're here as your partner.
I know.
Okay, we're not here as...
You're not an adversary, we get it.
Exactly, we're here to help.
And we need you something.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so keeping in mind that we have our goal now, now how are we going to meet that goal? Well, we've come up with seven concepts, and they have pretty wide variance as far as what the cost will be and what the impact will be and what the benefit will be. So we all know you get what you're paid for, right? That's what my grandma used to tell me. So, Tony, you can't expect five dollars worth of benefit when you're only shelling a hundred dollar into that bucket. But let's talk about these concepts and what they can bring to you, and then keep moving forward as far as developing something that may be palatable, maybe stomachable here in Scott. So option one is no buildings are demolished. We keep everything we got and we renovate it as best we can. Now, the challenges with that are, right now, if you've been in that courthouse, there's a lot of elevation change, there's a lot of different floor levels. So when you come in, you're not even on the same floor level as any of the courts. You've got to go upstairs or up in that elevator in order to get to any of the courtrooms, and that's a challenge. So as we move forward with an option such as this, you know, making that work, we're not fixing it, if that makes any sense. So we would need to remove Scott Services, and we would need to move the Commonwealth attorney to an alternative site, i.e., there's not enough space for everyone on the campus if we're not adding any square footage, okay? And we'd be adding very minimal, you'll see a couple boxes there, an expansion of thirteen sixty-five and an expansion of eleven ninety-nine. So we would be adding some square footage, but we wouldn't be demolishing anything to accomplish it. This option was not preferred by the county, this option was not preferred by the users. When I refer to users, those are the stakeholders, the clerks and the judges and the Commonwealth attorney and the sheriff's office. So this is option one. And you see the bottom right image, new level, level two, level one, you can sort of see it in the bottom right corner. That's that expansion of the existing jail that we would propose, okay? So option two would demolish the annex, okay? That's the building that's directly behind the courthouse, directly to the north. Of all the buildings on the campus, it seems to be in the most disrepair. I think it served the county well, you got good value for it. But again, challenges as far as the different floor levels and the connectivity back to the existing buildings. So that building will be demolished, all the others will be renovated. Still, we don't have enough space, even if we did this, to get Scott Services and all the other needs met. And again, this option was not preferred by the county or the users. So we would expand on the back of the courthouse, and we would also expand onto that jail. So option three would be demolishing everything on the north side of the site, okay? That would include the annex and the existing jail and that portion of the jail which Scott Services currently resides in, right there in the middle of the block. And we would build a multi-level facility on that street connected back to the courthouse. You see on that diagram to the bottom right, where it says roof, that would be a proposed vehicle salary port. Where we try to pull in, offload detainees, and then pull out to the north. Obviously, very challenging again, because you've got an extreme amount of elevation change. The advantage is that we've reserved the historic schoolhouse along Jackson. The area of concern is the height of the expansion. You're right there next to the church, across the street to the north. So that might be a concern for those occupants. With this option, everyone would get enough square footage, everyone would be able to remain on this campus. But there would be obviously some significant demolition and construction. And as far as that height question, so this is the Fredericksburg courthouse that most of the architects worked on a number of years ago. You can see it's a three-story building as you're looking at it, but it appears to be two-story, and that top floor is covered by a mansored roof. So there's attributes we can put on the building to make it look shorter, even though it's a full three-story building, four-story building, et cetera. So option four would demolish everything on the existing site, with the exception of the existing historic courthouse. And we basically would build a C shape around that existing historic courthouse. Again, we would get enough square footage for all the occupants. The advantage is you would have a secure exterior courtyard for the staff and get the connectivity that you need. And, you know, along Jackson, you would now have a flush face which preserves that streetscape. And right now, that schoolhouse is sitting a ways back. By pulling it forward, it would preserve that streetscape, which is preferable when you're doing development in a downtown urban environment. Option five would be demolishing the annex and the schoolhouse but leaving the jail, okay? This option was not preferred by the user groups due to the challenges posed by the jail. Another area of concern is the historic value of that former schoolhouse, is would there be resistance to demolishing it? But again, we could get enough square footage. You see the building that would be rather tall there to the north of the historic courthouse. But the two-floor building along Jackson would correctly pair with the historic facility. Option six is the same as option five in terms of what is demolished. But now we're putting an additional level on the building on Jackson and taking a level off of the building expansion to the north. So there'd be three floors along Jackson. Again, renovation of the jail is not preferred by the user group, and we still have concerns about the demolition of that former schoolhouse. So in summary, it was agreed from the users and from the county that the sheriff's annex and the jail should be demolished. Even if renovated to a high standard, you know, the structure may not lend itself to the contemporary efficient courthouse for office space. There's concerns about the structural stability and feasibility of the renovation of the sheriff's annex. That's one reason why it's recommended for demolition. We contacted or are in contact with the Scott County Historical and Genealogical Society to discuss the preservation of the former schoolhouse. But we haven't struck colors or petitioned them for demolition of that building as yet. And ideally, the expansion would include a secure parking for the judges and the constitutional officers mainly. That would be the sheriff, Commonwealth attorney, and the circuit clerk. And the current parking arrangement is not secure, and it places staff vehicles at risk and increases the risk for inappropriate contact, i.e. between family members of litigants and the judges. So lastly, there's the parcel that's to the east of Mandeville, okay? We understand that the county owns this parcel, and it could be the site for a new courthouse, okay? When I say new courthouse, what do I mean? I don't mean abandoning the historic. Somebody would remain in the historic courthouse. That may be the circuit and the circuit court clerk, because that has always been the court seat for the last a hundred years here in Gate City. And maybe have a new district courthouse for J and D R and general district. The difficulty there is, and we haven't discussed this yet with the sheriff, is he would have two security checkpoints at that point. So he'd be screening public at the historic courthouse, he'd be screening public at the district courthouse. That would potentially mean more staffing for him. Something to consider, but maybe easier to implement the demolition of those historic buildings which are to the north of the historic courthouse and that schoolhouse to the east. And to your point, Mr. Chair, about, you know, maybe the annex and the jail are demolished, but they're demolished for parking space, which would then put them closer to the historic courthouse and they wouldn't have to walk across the street. So the goal may still be to demolish those facilities, but it would be demolishing it for parking and not for construction of the buildings. So with that, I seek your input on the concepts. Are there any that resonate with you as a board? Are there any that you say, Tony, we've got to go there, but not even look at any of the others? Or do you have any other questions? So, you know, the next steps would be moving forward on what we've discussed is the expansion to the north and to the northeast where the jail is, and then looking at an option on the east side of, excuse me, on the west side of Mandeville.
Are you giving costs for each of these options?
We will, we will, as we move forward with it. But if there are certain, you know, we're looking at six options right now, possible seventh, which would be to the west of Mandeville. We don't want to look at cost and development of all those if the county is not interested in looking at some of those options. The next step would be not only having the blocks that we looked at today, but beginning to place the different court stakeholders in the building to show connectivity. So when we take these before the court stakeholders, the first question they're going to ask, based on our experiences, where am I? Where is my space? How am I going to function? And the sheriff is rightfully justified, he wants to know how he's going to be able to maintain the safety and security, the security checkpoint, the movement of detainees throughout the court safely and securely as they move forward. Because we want to fix the issues, right? We don't want to spend money, to your point, Mr. Chairman, make the investment but not fix the issues. So as we move forward, Mr. Tipton, we'll create floor plans which won't show every space. You won't see every judges' chambers, toilet room, storage closet. But you will see the circuit clerk is going to be in this corner. The circuit court will be in the middle of the building where it is now. How they will maintain connectivity, and then we'll develop a cost for that option. Does that make sense?
If you build a new building, you're going to connect it to the old courthouse?
If we build a new building on the site, yes. If we build a new building to the west of Mandeville, we would not propose to connect it. There would be two standalone courthouses. And what I propose would be received well by the court stakeholders and the court. It would be a circuit courthouse and a district courthouse perhaps. But again, those decisions haven't been, they have not been discussed with the court stakeholders, but they would be two standalone courthouses. And that's not unusual as you walk throughout the Commonwealth. There are many localities who have two courthouses based on those arrangements.
And the sheriff's office would be a little bit more set now back to the court?
No, sir. I'm sorry if I misled you on that. The sheriff has space in the courthouse for court services. So he has holding areas, he has a little bit of personnel space. You know, when his sheriff's bailiffs are not in court or not at the checkpoint, they need this place to sit. But the majority of the functionality for the sheriff's office in the courthouse is those holding areas. So that's really the only space that they would maintain. None of the existing sheriff's office would move back. We are not proposing that.
As far as renovation versus rebuilding, tearing down, rebuilding, I think the first three maybe were, first three options were renovation. Would you think it's a rule of thumb that the life of a public building is fifty years, around fifty years?
Around fifty years. Obviously, you've got a little longer use of your existing historic courthouse than that.
Okay, my question is, with renovation, what would you project the use of these buildings to be with renovation, first three options?
The goal would still be the fifty years.
Fifty years still?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But obviously, you know, I have a thirty-year-old truck. I don't know if you have a thirty-year-old truck. We could put a dimension in it, we could put a new transmission in it, and it would run better than it did the day before. But at the end of the day, it's still a thirty-year-old truck. We still know that that's going to take more maintenance, more operational cost than if we rebuild a new building. So although we can get things up to the level to meet the need, get everyone the space they require, by maintaining the older spaces, they're going to need more maintenance, need more operational cost moving forward. In all likelihood, the... In all likelihood, the existing historic courthouse walls probably don't have insulation on them. Why? They just didn't exist back then, right? They didn't have fiberglass insulation when you constructed that building. So you're leaking a little bit of energy. That's okay. Okay? We all understand that. But if you build a new building, you're going to have the insulation on the walls. You're going to have the insulation on the roof. You're going to meet the current building codes. So to answer your question, 50 years, Mr. Brick, Supervisor Brickie. But I think it's going to, operationally, it's going to be more costly than if you're building expansions and if you build new buildings. Does that make sense?
Right now, do you know the cost per square foot to build?
It's going up.
But right now, I mean, if you...
A new courthouse right now, building only, is about $400 a square foot.
Let me do the math. Forty-four thousand pounds.
Twenty-five million.
And on top of that, obviously, you've got other costs.
That's just the building?
That's just the building, right.
What you come up with? Who does? Somebody got a calculator?
Well, we ran some numbers previously. So if you just look at the deficiency, okay, just the deficiency.
Now, we don't call it the numbers here. I mean, it's just such a tremendous amount.
It's a big number.
Huge number. Unless, we're not here, we don't kill the messenger here, so you're good.
I appreciate that.
We are. We make them back in a few moments, but we're not, yeah, we're good with you.
Well, again, we're here to create an option that is implementable and is going to solve your needs. And if it's not adding square footage, that's fine. This is your courthouse, not Mo's, the architect's. We're here as your agent to help you, guide you on that path to make something that you can implement. It's a big number. We ran some, like I said, we ran some numbers with the county previously. The 44,000, that's just the deficiency. That $400 a square foot is 17.8 million. If you're building a brand-new courthouse, i.e. the entire 65,000, that's $26 million. We're not talking about doing that. We're not talking about building a brand-new courthouse for the whole evening. And that's not what we've been directed to do moving forward. Again, we want to create something that is implementable and affordable, and it may be phased. You may build one piece first, get some of those needs met, and then further down the road, build another piece. But it's all about priorities, right? So I don't, again, I don't know if any of these resonated with you, the options that we're looking at. If there's any showstoppers there, Tony, you know, we really, we can't get rid of that existing judge's house, the old, the former schoolhouse. We've got to keep that. There's too much community feeling for that facility. Or if we're all in agreement that we need to demolish the existing annex and that vacated jail, we can move forward with that with all the options.
Makes a lot of numbers, big numbers. But, you know, one thing that stood out when you were talking about it was not only just the space needs, but like the moving of the prisoners backwards and forwards to wherever they need to go and keeping them separate. You know, that might be something, you know, we need to look into. You know, if we could use what we had and try to make that work, I don't know if that would be even possible. And, you know, if it's going to come and we're going to have to have, that we're going to separate the courts, if that's going to be a must, you know, that might. But the situation we're in right now, that's a, that's a big, big number. Could you pull up option six again, please?
Yes, sir. Option six demolishes the annex, former jail, the old jail, historic jail, and the schoolhouse.
And this was not preferred?
This is not preferred because renovation of the jail is not preferred. Trying to reuse that existing jail.
Option four is similar to this with the jail.
Is that, okay, with the jail?
Step back to that one. So this demolishes, option four demolishes everything except for the historic courthouse. And the additions that have been made there, too.
Yeah. It would be interesting to see the costs of these.
When you say these?
These options.
We like options.
Have you got those broken down, different prices for different options?
We will. We will. And you may be asking, well, Tony, are we going to save money by renovating versus building new? My gut is telling me right now, probably not. Because working in, and we're not, we're making the assumption that we're not vacating the courthouse at any time. We need to maintain operations in the courthouse because we have nowhere else to go, right? We need to maintain that existing courthouse while we are implementing whatever solution we're going to implement. That's going to drive costs up and it's going to create more phases of the project. So that does not save us money. The more complicated the project becomes, the more costly it is going to be on bid day. Does that make sense? The more clean it can become, the lesser the cost. Hence the reason we look at option seven. That's the new courthouse to the west of Mandeville Road. It's a clean site. You can build a new facility there. And you can renovate your historic courthouse to meet the needs of whoever remains.
That was going to be my next question. Comparing option four to the parking lot, building and parking lot to the west of the courthouse. Those two, I think, would be good to look at. Is there consensus?
I think two buildings, I mean, that's attractive to me. But how do the users feel about having separate?
We have not, we have not sold that yet to the users. We have not gotten their opinion. Reason being is, we, I guess, happened upon this option rather late in our development of options. So we haven't discussed it with them. And I think, from my take, the biggest discussion, the one with the biggest opinion on this issue is from the sheriff's office. Because he's now got two buildings to maintain control of rather than just one. However, if we can fix all of the issues in the two buildings and make it less difficult than one which has a lot of concessions, it may be better. Again, that's the ability of a new building, fixing a lot of the issues without having to make concessions, especially when it comes to vertical circulation, upstairs, downstairs. If you've ever watched somebody in leg shackles go up and downstairs, it is not a safe situation. One misstep and they're down. It creates issues for not only the detainee, but for the sheriff's deputies that are monitoring. So trying to fix some of those issues may be more fixable in a new building, even though we've now got two buildings to maintain operations and security. Does that make sense?
Sheriff would have smaller square footage to control in both buildings than any other facility, any other group in these buildings, wouldn't he?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think I'm calling your question.
He didn't have a whole lot as far as security?
He does not have a lot, a whole lot of square footage.
Right.
He's mainly monitoring the security checkpoint when you come into the facility, you know, screening, the security screening, and then the detainees as they come in from the regional jail. The way I understand it now is he doesn't even take custody of the detainees until they're in the courtroom. So the regional jail is actually running the show in your existing vacated jail. And they maintain custody of the inmate all the way until they walk in the door of the courtroom, at which point the responsibility is then transferred. So that would be something we need to discuss moving forward is, does it still happen that way? Or does the regional jail offload them at the vehicle salvage port? If you would say we would have a vehicle salvage port.
Does the regional jail bring the inmates up your jail or do you all go pick them up?
They bring them up.
They bring them up?
They go to the existing jail or I would, and we, that would probably be the date. When we date them, they bring them down to the court.
And that's what he took custody, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But if I'm reasonable, I have a parolee, state of the art or something, then jail is kind of my responsibility and...
How much money do you all pay to pick them up?
They bring them up here from the plane. Before they get a 24-bike or something, they bring them up here to pick them up.
On the parking, if you do away with the parking, of course, people won't park.
It's a good question. It's a valid question.
One thing I want to say on the two buildings on both sides of Mandeville Road. If you, where is everybody going to park at exactly? I've got one X-ray machine. I've got a front cover which I just recently got years ago. And I've got one metal detector. I have all that equipment in another building. We've got it in two different buildings. It's going to be a lot of work to finish that. We don't have the personnel to maintain. Positions, hiring more personnel to operate, fix every building. That's just my opinion of the manual regarding that.
If we build on the west side of the road, is there not parking where the old, the library, the schoolhouse is?
There's a little bit of parking there.
How about the old jail?
Yeah, that's what I was saying earlier when the chairman was saying, you know, we need to demolish that even if it's for parking. So the proposal would be, we build a new court facility, we renovate the historic court facility, and then we demolish both the historic jail and the vacated jail and put parking all along the north edge of the lot.
Plus, where the schoolhouse is lost?
Yeah, I don't know. Again, I don't know that we would want to demolish that schoolhouse unless we had to. But there could be secure parking there for judges because that would put them really close to the courthouse. We just need to figure out, and Mr. Tipton, I think, asked about, you know, where would we do, where would we do holding? We'd like to option one. So say we would do the west building. I understand the sheriff's office has some concerns about that, the building west of Mandeville. We could still do a small expansion there on the west side of the historic courthouse, and that could be your connection point as far as holding is concerned.
Do you have enough space right behind the existing courthouse to build on without tearing down the old jail and leave you?
Yes, sir.
There's not enough space?
Yes, sir.
Even if you made it?
It's just an alley.
Yeah.
Like it's wide enough for a car to drop down and that's it.
Twenty-five, twenty-five of those alleys, that's it, sir.
That'll jail in bad shape. I went to it three years ago. It is horrible.
It ain't anything to do with that. Oh, and it's building a shop. What we're, we're going to leave is a shop.
So we will keep moving forward. We'll develop some cost. And we'll develop some floor plan, block and stack floor plans that show where the different components will be in the developed options. And we understand right now, we're kind of leaning at one and, excuse me, at four and seven as our preferred options at this point. Four being demolish everything on site, provide full connectivity back to the historic courthouse. And seven being perhaps a new building on west of Mandeville. Any other input, questions?
Well, you said demolish everything on site. That's the old ladder, too?
Yes, sir.
I was under the influence earlier that you said it was going to be a lot of conflict.
There may be. You want us to...
You think public or something?
Yes, sir. We could go with option three. We just keep it to the house.
You know, when I met with those three judges, the elected one, I'd be the chief judge, as Calferny was going to come and talk to us, the board here, about what we discussed. We'd probably need to hear from them, the court clerk, from the people working on our court services as to what their thoughts are in this. I mean, y'all's thoughts, I mean, we need to hear from them. I mean, they're one of those, have they give us some ideas that can make it better, make it cheaper? You know, pick their brain a little bit, too, as to what we can do, which, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, he has their input. They've had calls with all those user groups.
Okay, all right, good. I know we have this, the groups, okay. So we'll need to hear from directly then as far as...
So how about we, we work, we're in agreement. We'll develop options three, four, and seven, okay? Get input from the stakeholders, develop the block and stack, develop the cost estimates, and come back. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
I mean, it's, it's okay to talk about it. I'm totally fine talking about it. But, you know, right now, we as a county are not prepared to go in full scale with building.
And that's what I was going to say, too.
So, I mean, we need to, need to make sure, I mean, I'm fine talking about it, but maybe years down the road.
Well, and I think, too, the piece of it that we talked about was a phased approach. So give us options, you know, price of, you know, just like this year, we can do X, Y, and Z. You know, maybe we can demolish something or fix the parking lots or, you know, give us a, maybe give us some sort of timeline, like, you know, a schedule, construction schedule type thing to where it's spread out perhaps. You know, like what would your, you know, if we chose, or not we, but I mean, if it was decided for, let's just say this one, what would be your first?
First step.
First step, you know, who was that?
A phased implementation, if you will. Like, this would be step, phase one.
And then the price of that, you know, if we can do that perhaps.
Sure.
That might help. That might help us see the bigger, you know, I mean, we don't, I mean, I don't think we need to do this all in all at one time. I mean, we can't afford $25 million. You know, but I think, you know, pieces and parts of it, there may be, we may be able to implement throughout. I mean, that might be an option. I don't know.
The difficulty with that is, Supervisor here, Supervisor Bricky, Supervisor here, is if we continue to move forward with small renovation, like I said, I'm just going to go out of limb here. Say we look at that existing vacant jail, not the, not the historic jail, but the one where we're currently using as holding. We've turned one of those type facilities into office space. Why, why do we do that? Well, those cells make pretty good little offices, right? And we could put a department in there, okay? Is that the right long-term solution for Scott County? Or are we just throwing money down a hole knowing that, you know, back to, back to your, your point, Supervisor Bricky? You know, is that going to be the 50-year solution? Probably not. You know, we're going to put some masking tape on it, duct tape on it to try to buy us some more time. And we do that every day for many localities in the Commonwealth because they don't have, you can't spend 10 if you only have five. So we can look at those kind of options as well, but I don't think it's going to move you toward the full master plan that's going to meet all your needs. Does that make sense? It's just going to buy you more space and it may not be ideal space. Okay.
Are you familiar with Russell County? They're doing something now with south of their courthouse.
We are. We finished number two on that.
Yeah.
We're working with Washington right now on their courthouse expansion. And they're going to have a pretty significant expansion in Abidin to the west of their courthouse.
So it's not unique to us, I mean, it's just...
It is not. It is not. Everyone kind of gets here. It's just, you know, analogy, when do you rip off the band-aid, right? And it's a, it's a pretty big band-aid. We acknowledge that. We acknowledge. We know these are big numbers. We know you're struggling with multiple priorities, not just courts, schools, other facility. We know you're struggling with multiple priorities, not just courts, schools, other facility needs. Um, and what we're here to try to help, to make it something that you can implement, a, and, and this is by no means a take-or-leAVE-it deal, Mr. Chairman. We understand you may have to buy it off in small pieces. So, we, we will create a phased incremental approach, Andrew, do you have anything you want to?
I, I just wanna mention that the reason we first started with option one, that was, that was gonna be our low-budget solution. We understand that the county, uh, wants to be sensible with the spending on this project, so, um, by keeping and renovating, every structure will be, as Tony mentioned, the most complicated to implement, because that'll be the most difficult to phase, and it won't solve the problems detainees leaving buildings to access the courthouse. However, I think it, um, if we are concerned about cost, which I understand we are, um, that option one, I, I'd like to hear if the county has any specific ideas that, like, we have to at least demolish the sheriff's annex, you know? What's gonna be the lowest, uh, we're willing to go to satisfy and update this facility?
The biggest consideration that I see is the sweeping of JDNR and General District,
Yeah.
which they have already put off because we were in the process of this study. Uh, that's gonna happen in the next year or so.
We actually bound time, but done what we're doing.
Yeah, we're, we're going to have to have a JDNR courtroom and a General District courtroom and the clerks separate at some point in the near future. So, I don't know where, if that was to happen today with our existing facility, I have no idea where they'd go.
See, since we are just throwing ideas out there, and that doesn't cost anything, if we built on the west side of the street going up past the courthouse, for security and, and to connect the two buildings, would an overhead walkway be too expensive to even consider? And would it help as far as security and access between the two departments?
It's not inexpensive. Um, it could be done. Does it fit the aesthetic of Gate City, of the town of Gate City, to have a sky bridge? I think that'd be something that the town would, would want to evaluate, that you might want to evaluate. But to answer your question, we've done it, it could be done, you would have one security checkpoint in one of the two buildings, and then crossover. It may create a little bit of, uh, logistics issues as far as, right now, we'll come in the front door of the historic courthouse, if we put the security checkpoint in the new building, and the new connection, as you're coming over top of Mandel, would be where the public would access the building, we, we need to figure out how to get them back to, into the courtroom and into the circuit court clerk's office right now, 'cause that area's recently renovated. And we'd like to try to maintain some of that value, um, as best we can.
There, there's one additional thing we had considered, which would be moving all three courts to a new building. Now, um, the advantage is, now there's still only one building for the sheriff's deputies to be concerned with, and, uh, existing courthouse could be given to the Commonwealth attorney and Scott Services, it'd be a bit large for them, but if the county had other space needs for other departments, such as administration, or I understand economic development was at one time in the library building. Now, the disadvantage is, the courthouse has a tradition of being in that building of the county, so we have to hear some community thoughts about moving in. We would still maintain the building, it just wouldn't be the courthouse anymore.
I think security is very, very important, and right now, I don't know how we avoided problems, Jeff, with prisoners coming in and possibly walking by families of people that they've been involved with, you know? I'm sorry?
It does happen occasionally. We had one bring them down from the district courtroom down the outside metal steps, she got her leg ironed and shattered. Tangled up, recently I lost her, bring her out, she fell over the railing, and on the blacktop six, but dropped, but they didn't seriously hurt. So I made a quick use of those things. Looked down through the courtroom, up the elevator, to the upstairs of the courtroom upstairs. That's where I met her, dude. You got her at the end.
We got a lot to look at. One thing too, in Dixon County, it's not too far away, they actually built a new courthouse, they're just ordered to do that, they, come from a judge's order to do that, so, we're at the mercy of the courts to do this, and, uh, so it's just, I think we gotta do something with it.
All right, so we will create some options with some phased implementation.
That's best, you can.
And, and some cost components if you look at. And then we will come back, okay?
Good presentation.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You have a question for Mr. Chair?
No, good.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the amend the school budget fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Good morning, how is everyone?
Good morning, how you doing?
Good morning. Okay. Uh, do hope Miss Sarge to share with you some of the grants that we have made application for, and we're fortunate enough to have been recipients of. Also, I listed the dates in which we were actually the, the verification of these particular grants. Uh, if you may question the one that's highlighted, the last one, I didn't receive it until, uh, February the fourteenth, uh, this was, I, I would suspect it is unused school security grant monies throughout the state, and we were fortunate enough to be recipients of that as well. But with these different amounts here, uh, the majority, of course, have come from ESER-type funds. Uh, we did receive verification that Scott County will be recipients of the Twenty-First Century Grant, which we have had in the past, which will be provided for after, as well as summer school programs at Nicholsville, Duffield, and at Schumaker. Uh, each year we do apply for the school security grant, seems like every year they keep getting further and further behind in their announcements. So the initial grant that we had, uh, supplied, we didn't receive the notification of it to the end of December. And then again, the, uh, unused reallocated money, uh, verification on the fourteenth of February. Just wanted to make you aware of these additional grant monies, as I've shared with you before, in order for us to get reimbursement, we have to spend these monies out ahead of time.
You have the amount?
It ended up totaling one million, four hundred, six thousand, two hundred and five dollars that we had made application for.
That's what I had here, I wanna make sure we had some, so.
And the reason for the ESER three monies there, dated twelve thirteen, that is a portion of the larger grant in itself, and the reason we use that amount is, is some of the projects that we feel like we could get done this fiscal year. As was made mentioned about construction costs, uh, roof costs have gone up, out the roof before, we've always used about fourteen dollars on the square foot, that amount is now twenty-plus, so it's.
Goes up.
It goes up, and we've got folks that are good at work, but the other issue we have at hand is the supplies. And, uh, so it's, it's, it just doesn't happen overnight, it's, there are a lot of times they put us on the back burners when we can get the materials and supplies in. But if anyone can share that with you, does anyone have any particular question in regards to these grants?
Anyone?
We'll keep at, we'll keep writing and asking for them, we'll keep our fingers crossed, hopefully we'll be recipients of them.
Hey, sorry about the loss of your day, I know.
Yeah. Thank you.
He's a good man.
So, thank you.
All right, any comments, questions here for Mr. Ferguson? If not, we need to vote on this, correct? The men?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we have a motion, uh, on this amount, it's one thou, one million, four hundred, six thousand, two hundred and five dollars? The amended, the amendment of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two school budget, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have a second, any discussion? I'll vote on the second, I?
I.
I oppose the motion, Karen.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Our next item is ten B, we added that to the agenda, the pipeline, and we'll find out what that is, I don't know what it is, but Miss Sarge, if you want to place on everybody, you, you may.
I've got a couple slides to share with you, so you'll be able to look it up.
It's not an actual pipeline, but you'll see what she's talking about. There's a call with that.
My meeting with VDOT wasn't until Monday, so this is why it wasn't on your agenda originally. But it's a time for smart scale, round five, and our pre-applications are due April first, so that's why I wanted to go ahead and give you an update. Um, we've got a couple of alternatives that we're gonna look at, uh, some's in the far future, so we won't look at those today. But there was a MetroQuest survey done, uh, that ran between January thirty-first and February the fourteenth, and there were seventy participants. Uh, so these alternatives, uh, alternative number one ranked higher than alternative number two, as we go through, so you can just keep that in, in mind. Uh, what we're gonna look at first is, um, south of the bridge to, uh, Interstate twenty-six, to the state line. So this is an access management project, and yellow means that we're gonna keep that entrance, and red means it'll be closed. So you can see, um, along the businesses, this is where you come from Tennessee into Virginia, over at the state line. There, there'll be four red closures that are along those businesses, each business still maintains an entrance, but there is just so many ins and outs through Weber City and this section, uh, in Scott County, that is just very dangerous, and we have a lot of accidents in that area. There'll be turn lane improvements, that's what the green means, in each direction there. As you move on, uh, coming toward, um, the Weber City Bridge, you can see there's, uh, a crossover there in the median that's gonna be closed, that's across from John's Car Sales. Uh, there's no turn lane there, so a lot of accidents, rear-end accidents happen in that location, trying to turn in to the fruit stand or, uh, the gas station that's there. Uh, so John's Car Sales, of course, will still have their entrance, uh, it's just won't, it won't be just one big, you can turn in anywhere, so you can see the closures there, and the, there, I believe there's actually two entrances for them then. Uh, no changes in this section, coming by the tire store. Then when you get closer to the bridge, um, the Exxon station beside Priceless Foods, uh, will be cut down to one entrance, they are gonna take a look at this and make sure that yellow one may need to be made wider, because we need to make sure that those fuel tankers can get into that gas station and do their circulation without any issues. And then, um, some curb maintenance there in front of Burgers or Rose, uh, there'll still be a nice entrance there for them and the shopping center. And then coming on into Weber City, um, there will be an entrance closed there to the little, uh, site at the farm beside New Peop, the old New People's Bank. Uh, the only access to that parcel will be off of, uh, the road that goes up to TeleTech. And VDOT, you know, we've talked about that in the past on access for that parcel, so we do, you know, they have shared with us that the only access will be off of the new road. So that'll be closed, uh, the bank, um, which is no longer a bank, but we don't know who the new owners are and what the use will be, they're still leaving both entrances there, so if it is a new bank that comes in, their flow will still work. And you can see in front of, uh, Roberts Tire and Recapping, there's foreclosures there. Uh, EDA owns the White Roof Buildings, and I've talked to them, and VDOT is going to put us in an entrance between where there's foreclosures, the two middle ones, there's gonna be an entrance there where you can cut up the hill to the cemetery, and that way they still have access, and we still have access to that EDA parcel with the separate entrance. And then the tire store will keep theirs as well, uh, there'll be turn lane improvements there in the green as well, and I should have mentioned, uh, Kingsport, uh, MPTO will be doing the application for us from the bridge to twenty-six, and then we will have a pre-app for the Weber City section that I'll show you next. So this was the survey results, uh, for alternative number one, the overall ranking was three point six. Alternate two, uh, was more aggressive, and that's closing all the entrances from twenty-three into these businesses, and all access would be from State Line Circle Road, which would have some improvements done that hit to make it, uh, better feasible for everyday use. But this one did not score, as you can see, averaged three point four nine for this one section, so alternate two didn't score as well as alternate one on the surveys, so alternate two will not be our application, but as you can see, everything was closed there, and all traffic would flow on State Line Circle. Alternate three scored the lowest overall average of three point three three, and that was some more modifications at Newland Hollow, Newland Hollow Road, so that won't be, uh, a pre-app as well. So then, moving on into Weber City, this is at the Dollar General and at Carter Trent Funeral Home, uh, there'll be turn lane improvements there in the red, and, uh, that's the biggest section for this, uh, this is eligible for a traffic lot, but it's very hard to get a traffic signal on a main artery in Virginia, so that's most likely not gonna happen. And they did talk about trying to get Chapel Street and the road that comes up by the Dollar Store kind of aligned more, but they just don't have much space to work with there, because the buildings are so tight to the right-of-way. And then, at the Dollar Store, you know, if you go down to the bottom of the parking lot, there's like, just a little exit you can take, that's gonna be closed. I, I don't have a pointer, so I can't show you exactly where that's at. So there's trying to clean up that area too, 'cause you know it's kind of hard to pull out there, 'cause you are in a curve. And then option two would also be making a right turn lane coming from Gate City toward Kingsport to go on Chapel Street, but that would take, um, the parcel of land there where the mon, the cemetery monument business is at, that would be a complete buy, so I'm not sure that that would be feasible for this option. And then we've got several railroad crossings that they're talking about closing, um, McNutt, this option shows it closed, but out of all of the options overall, McNutt will remain open as a railroad crossing, but will have closures at Blanton Drive, that's a really steep grade, and at Boom Street Closure. So both of those would be closed, McNutt would remain open. And then this is just some more analysis, um, that shows some signal volume and things like that, of course, you know, that this is a very highly traveled corridor, and at times rivals Interstate seventy-seven, you know, we hear that all the time from VDOT, how much traffic we have in this area. And then later on, this won't be, in this smart scale round, we're looking at improvements along Baltic Drive and Legion Street, maybe making this for tractor and trailer traffic going to the wirehouses, will have better, uh, access to that area, and they would be utilizing the Food City red light. I think you can't make that leap, because it's closed off right now, but this was something that's being looked at, and maybe will be a project in the future. So do you have any questions about alternative one or alternative four, those are the ones that we'll be looking at for pre-apps? And like I said, alternate one, um, will be applied for by the Kingsport MPTO.
What's the time limit on this, you know?
The pre-app opens April first, and then if we're screened in, we'll submit a full application for the project, and then it's probably, I'm gonna guess, six to seven years out, so it's quite a while before, even if the project's funded, that it's gonna be done.
Do we know how well the project will last, we don't know yet?
No. We don't know at this time. But we all know how big of a nightmare it would be.
Will there be public hearings on this?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. So we'll get a lot of input from the folks directly back to us.
Well, hopefully we wouldn't have the other point of the wall, don't get up closed at the same time, so.
Right, and that was the point of the surveys, uh, this was one of the lower survey results that they got back in, was just. This was one of the lower survey results that they got back in, was just seventy for this area. Lee County had some surveys go out, and they doubled their response back. So we didn't get a lot of feedback, but we will as time goes on and people see more about what the project's about. But I just wanted to give you an update. Like I said, the pre-applications due April first, so I'll be working on that between now and then to get that submitted. Have any other questions?
None. Anyone?
On the the circle over there in State Line? Is that the way they're going to get into those businesses?
No, that was alternate number two.
That's two, so it's out.
It's out, yeah. You can still get in those businesses from State Line Circle, but we're going to leave, each business will still have an entrance from US twenty-three.
May not have both ways.
No, at least have one each, yes.
Anything from anyone? All right, is that it?
Yes.
Good information. I think there's a hundred and sixty-eight entrances to twenty-three between State Line and Monmouth Gap.
There's a lot.
It's a hundred and sixty-eight, so.
I mean, if you drive through there and just look at the access points, you could basically turn in and out anywhere along the whole route.
Are they, are they possibly even looking at between Weber City and Gate City where the rocks are coming off that mountain? Or that's going to be a problem?
I haven't talked to them about that, though.
That was the one thing we pushed on back a few years ago, to try and get that bypass in between Route seventy-one and Monmouth Gap to get that done. That was, and it was in there one time to get it done, and then it, the money went away for it, so I don't know.
Well, the rocks are coming off of there, and it's simple in time, in water, you know, that's going to happen. And we don't really have a backup plan.
If we lose Route twenty-three there, I don't know what people would do. It's fifty-some miles around, so. And that was my push to the six-year plan, to try to get that in. And Little Whisker got involved, it had come up with, it's been a few years ago, Kenny did hire the cost while they proposed, but VDOT wouldn't do it, they backed off. And I thought it was a done deal, but they backed off, so I don't know. Anything else on the pipeline? Thank you, man. Good job. Next item is the Nicholsville Fire Department requesting a building permit.
I have that.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Their building permit is for an extension on the fire department in Nicholsville. The building permit was a hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents, and the electrical permit was thirty-five dollars and seventy cents, for a total of two twenty-nine fifty. And they're asking for a waiver of those fees.
Okay. But we always do this, so do we have a motion on this waiver?
I'll make a motion, we make the fees.
Ms. Crew, you made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Out of play, a town of Gate City's sign request.
The town of Gate City reached out to Tammy Bowen, who's our E nine-one-one director, and wanted, well, actually, they spoke with Jack that does our sign installation. And they wanted to know if they could buy signed blades from us as the county, the same at what we allowed Weber City to do back in the fall. And Gate City does do their own sign purchasing, repairing, installation at this time. And their request was made because they said it would be easier and cheaper if they could buy the blades from us as needed instead of having to order those signed blades in bulk for just the town. So I told them that I would ask the board your thoughts on that.
What we did for Weber City, I don't know why we came to forget City, so. Any discussion? Need a motion to allow this to happen? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Crew, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item thirteen, security source officer, Officer Grant.
The sheriff's office is applying for a school resource officer grant for two positions. From what they have told me at the sheriff's office, the school system will pay the match, but I just wanted the board's approval for this grant because you will also have vehicles, uniforms, training, and equipment that will need to be provided. As far as the cars, they have two old Impalas that they said would be used by these officers. But, you know, because you have a lot of skin in the game, I wanted approval for this grant before it was applied for.
The deadline is Friday, looks like.
Yes.
Do we have a cost, amount, what's going to cost to count it?
I don't. Because right now, it would just be car, the cars are already on the insurance. Uniforms, probably five hundred dollars for those, or equipment, I would say guns and such, probably that much as well. So a couple thousand dollars at this point.
Do we need to take that out of our contingency fund to pay for it, you think, or how?
No, they have it in their budget. I just, anytime there's a new grant, I feel better if it's approved by the board.
I'll, I'll get with it.
I mean, there's, there's been two that retired, is that right, for one?
One's retired, and that position's still vacant.
Okay.
All right, let's get there. Do we have a motion on this?
I'll.
I'll make one. Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Herron, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
And I believe if this one gets funded, that'll make twelve old school resource officers.
Good. All right. All right, next item, Budget Committee. Who wants to volunteer? Don't make me, come over there.
I'll volunteer.
You may. Mr. Tipton has volunteered for the Budget Committee. Need one more?
I will, Mr. Tipton.
All right. Wow, I like y'all better every day. Geez, we got twist arms and. All right. So we can, I can point you off to that on the Budget Committee, and good luck with it. Your work is cut out for you. That's all. It's always the same. Every year, we have a lot of issues to get through, and so we know we'd be in good hands with you all. All right, we're rather quickly. Next item is item fifteen, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three health insurance, Ms. Sarge.
I received our health insurance renewal, and we have a nine point three percent increase. And the cost of the county will be an increase of twelve thousand four hundred and forty dollars if the enrollment stays the same that we have now. So I just need authorization to proceed with the insurance renewal. Let's do March twenty-fifth.
We got to do it, so. It's a little bit above inflation, but everything's going to go up. Count on it. All right, need a motion on this health insurance to proceed with it?
I'll make a motion.
All right. She's made a motion. Do we have a second? There. There. Mr. Stewart, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Look, keeping, save it.
Now please appropriate three thousand dollars to Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources Better Wireless Grants class three five two one zero dash six zero five for reimbursement received from the Department of State Office. Appropriate one thousand two hundred and six dollars to Sheriff's Office for parents and vehicles. Three one two zero zero dash six zero zero nine for an entrance claim. And appropriate nineteen thousand four hundred and five dollars to Sheriff's Office Grant two one dash eight eight six six zero B C two one. Body worn cameras, three one three five five dash eight two three for reimbursement received.
Do we have a motion on the appropriations that described, Ms. Stewart?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stewart, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Transfers.
Please transfer a hundred and fifty dollars from the Bound District Four dues and subscriptions two one two zero zero dash fifty eight ten to their food and water supply. Two one two zero zero dash six zero zero two.
Do we have a motion on the transfers?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Crew, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. All right, opponents, just tell your side.
We have an applicant, applicant's in your folder. The first one is for the Building Code Appeals Board. Tony Tate has been serving. He did not reapply. We have one applicant, Tim Edwards.
All right. Do you have any nominations for the Building Code Appeal Board?
I'll nominate, Mr. Edwards.
Okay, any other nominations? Hearing none, interclaim motion, nomination ceased, vote back, motion. Ms. Tipton, Mr. Stewart made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Herron, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
You have two openings on the Courthouse Facilities Committee. Lisa McFarney has been serving in the first position, and the second position, Tim Bradshaw has been representing the town of Gate City. You have one applicant, Lisa McFarney, Tim Bradshaw, did not reapply.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak on that?
You, you may.
The courthouse facilities committee was formed about ten years ago at my request. And what I was facing was, I'd walk into the courthouse and I would have, just walking through, I'd have every entity in there come up to me about an issue that they had to take care of. So I asked the board, let me form this committee that was members of each one of those offices in the courthouse, plus a citizen, plus a rep from the town. In that time, we've made a lot of advances in the courthouse. During that, we fixed the stairs going in, the bell tower, Commonwealth Attorney's Offices have been remodeled. Circuit courtroom was completely redone. Circuit Court Clerk's Office was redone, J D and R Room was built. At this point, with the presentation we had this morning, there's bigger fish to fry. We, I think we've accomplished everything that a committee like this was tasked to do. And we're looking at the expansion of courthouse, new, new areas. So this committee really hasn't had a reason to meet until we figure this out. We always welcome input from the town and the public, but I'm not sure that this committee needs to be dissolved at this point and recombating when we would need it. If we, if we need it. You know, Lisa being on the committee can have an opinion on that. But it was, it was formed for a particular task to address some of the issues that was current in the courthouse.
Were there part of any of this presentation today, was, did any of that come from that committee?
No, but each of the stakeholders that they talked to, except for a member, they actually talked to the town about the historical resources.
Right.
Is who's on that committee, and is, that makes up that committee. It's someone from the clerk's office, someone from Commonwealth Attorney's Office, someone from the Circuit Court judges, general district judges, and so on, sheriff's office.
So you recommend we dissolve the committee, is that what you're saying?
That. Yeah, I think that's my thought at the time. I don't think having that separate committee, we couldn't meet and decide on anything that most of the architects has presented to the board
Right.
because of the price tags and such.
Well, you're all stopped here on the board.
What about issues that might arise, like was talking about the dividing of the courts? I mean, I know they've come up with a plan, but we'll have to come up with something. I, I don't know. Would they, would that committee be able to maybe come up with some sort of temporary type something? I don't know.
There's a possibility. If you all want to keep the committee intact to have another opinion on stuff, but like I was saying, it's pretty much the same players, except for the town and the city. But I just wanted to give you some background on what that committee was formed for and what.
Well, I sort of think we ought to keep them. It's hard to get people to serve unless you've served well on it, but to keep them, like I'm on that Colorado Advisory Committee, we've never met, but still, we're there if we ever need to be. But anyway, let's keep them, and I mean, you don't have to make anything, just, you know, we're just, in case they are needed, it's not hurting anything to say that the committee exists, but, you know, we're just not doing anything right now.
So we could get a representative from the town, but.
It's hard to get people to serve, and I admire people that do serve. It's like getting people to equalization boards, it's hard to get people to do it. And once you get a committee established, and pretty good committee, I hate to lose them and not be able to get them back. My thoughts, you're off too. I mean, I'm just one here of seven, so you're all stopped too.
I agree.
I think some things will come up.
That was illegal?
Yeah, I think so.
Very well, too. Anyway, appreciate that, Bill. All right, anyway, North First, and any, any nomination for the first one? Do you have an application? Go ahead, sorry.
Said I nominate Lisa McFarney.
Any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination ceased, vote back, motion.
All right, all in favor? Need a motion, sorry. You made a motion?
I did.
Okay. You seconded that.
I'll second.
Ms. Herron, second. All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Then the second one, we don't have any vibes for that one, so you're going to do the process. Do you have any nomination for the second one? If not, we will carry that over to the.
That, that one needs to be represented in Gate City, is that right?
All right, the housing authority.
You have one opening on Housing Facility, Michael Kincaid has been serving. He did not, he did reapply, and you only have one applicant.
Do we have any nomination for the housing authority?
I'll nominate Michael Kincaid.
Any other nominations? Interclaim motion, nomination ceased, vote back, motion. Ms. Stewart made a motion. Do we have a second?
Stan, second.
Mr. Crew, you second. All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried. P S A.
You have two openings on Public Service Boarding. Eddie Skeen has been serving. He did reapply. Joe Warden has been serving. He did reapply, and you have one other applicant, C M A Edwards.
All right, there's two. Any nominations for the P S A?
I'll nominate Joe Warden.
Any other nomination for that song?
Motion nomination ceased, vote back, motion.
All right, we have the motion. Mr. Tipton, do we have a second?
I'll make it.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, motion carried. Okay, you second. Any nomination for the second position?
I'll nominate Eddie Skeen.
All right, Mr. Skeen's nominated. Do we have any other nominations?
I'll make a motion, nomination ceased, vote back, acclamation.
All right, Mr. Herron made a motion, nomination ceased. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Crew, you second. Any discussion? All three of them said aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
You have two openings on the Recreation Authority Board. One is for District Five, and one is for District Six. District Five expired, is an unexpired term, it expires June twenty-third. And you have no applicants. District Six, Ashley Kinsler has been serving, and she did reapply.
Any nominations from District Five? And I didn't have anybody. I was trying to think, I couldn't come up with anybody, but you have anyone? you have anyone?
I reached out to a few people, but nobody...
No texts?
Not yet.
We'll carry on to the next meeting. District Six, any nominations?
I'll nominate Ashley Kinsler.
All right, any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination cease, vote back, clamation.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, second. All fair and proper said, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, like you say. I'd like to take County Attorney, Ms. Kepner.
I don't have anything today. I can answer any questions, tell them on the field, in practice.
You have been busy.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of emails.
Yeah, she has.
You have too.
All right, any comments or questions for Ms. Kepner? All right, thank you, ma'am. County Administrator, Ms. Stone.
We'll start with the claims. Your available cash in the general fund after claims, seven million, four hundred eighty-four thousand, nineteen dollars and forty-eight cents. As you can see, we're a little ahead at this point from fiscal year nineteen and twenty, but a little behind the fiscal year twenty-one. And like I said last meeting, the school system has already drawn down the majority of their money, so that is probably part of the change as well as we took a pretty good chunk from the general fund to balance the budget, so we'll see that continue. That trend probably continued throughout the end of this fiscal year. As far as claims, your early sets, some of the big ones, the Axiom Enterprise was a Caesar grant for the Sheriff's Office, so of course that would be reimbursed. And then we have the Scott County Life Saving Crew, that's twenty thousand dollars, that was an early set for payroll, as well as a Dustfield Fire Rescue, a Nicholasville Rescue, five thousand dollars each. Waste Management, we paid that bill to keep from paying late fees, so that was thirty-six thousand, seven hundred four dollars and forty-two cents. And current claims, on the cover page, adding to all seventeen thousand, five seventy-four eighteen. Capitol Action National Commission, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, that's their monthly allocation. Cleaning District One Behavioral Health Services, from March fourteen thousand, four fifty-six twenty-five. So, early claims totaled one hundred and forty-three thousand, five eighty-six fifty-two. Total current claims, one hundred and twenty thousand, four twenty-three thirty. For total claims of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine dollars and eighty-two cents.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Stone?
I think most of the budget money for kill this year is going to be all right.
I think so.
It's not so much.
I think we're far enough along with the budget year that it's not going to be detrimental.
Any other comments or questions for our county administrator? If not, entertaining motion, pay the bills, do we have a motion?
I'll make.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Grubie, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper said, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Miss Alanus?
I do have a couple of things under Miss Alanus. Several months ago, we requested for you to do the animal friendly license plate money to the Scott County V.A. Society. When that E.F.T. came in, it was actually a different amount than what they had sent us, so we need to change that to a hundred and forty dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I need a motion to approve this amended amount, one forty-sixty-seven, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Grubie, second, any discussion? All fair and proper said, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And the next thing I have is, I need authorization to do R.F.P. for accounting services for fiscal year, beginning with fiscal year twenty-two. We usually do that for three years with an option to add two more years.
All right, need a motion to authorize Ms. Stone to do this R.F.P. for accounting services, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
She's made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Tipton, second, any discussion? All fair and proper said, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have.
Okay. Y'all take a quick break from... About five minutes break.
Thank you.
Okay. You sure? So, so this is, this is, this month is kind of a short time of the year. Not a short time, but it's a time of the year. There's not a lot of things going on. So you kinda, in the winter, kind of use this for planning. Of course, we have the grades and everything like that. And then we're getting ready to go into spring and summer. And here's some of the upcoming events. Carter Fable will open this weekend. They will reopen for the 2020 season with Hogsaw String Band. And Creation Kingdom Zero opens March 18th. They are going to do Run the Tunnel this year on April 30th. They're doing Kiss the Grinch, but they're changing the name to A7. They have, Gay City has some new events this year. Shamrock Shimmy, which is March 12th. That is a, I guess as it says, that is a St. Patrick's Day celebration. And then they're hoping to have a really nice big Christian concert in September. In May this year, this is something that we have put off, I guess, for three years now. We are finally going to be able to do Virginia Tourism Welcome Center Study Tour. And that is being hosted by the Heart of Appalachia. They'll come here May 4th. They're staying at the Inn at Wise. And we have a full schedule of adventure planned for them. And it ends with a tour and a visit at Carter Fable on the 7th. And we talked to them to come this time and coming on, on a Saturday so that they could go to the Carter Fable. This is the first time that they've ever come on a Saturday. And there's probably going to be about 35 people from the West, from the, from the visit centers. And then another 10 from Virginia Tourism Corporation. And then there's also going to be some media folks on this tour too because we have pitched some tourists to them. So they're going to come and see what this area is all about. And the media report for last year was like 287,000. We had some really nice coverage thanks to, in large part, working with the Heart of Appalachia. Social media, we've got, we're about 20,000 folks on Facebook and Instagram. Instagram has always been kind of a low for us. But, and I still continue to do the weekly newsletters. And we did pretty well with those. And then I also, those are also linked to the Facebook page. We did do, I think I talked to you all about the marketing leveraging grant that we got. And it was the Eat, Drink, Love. I'm not going to play all of this for you because this is a 20-minute presentation. You can look at it on our Facebook page.
Hey y'all, I'm Brittany Robertson. Your host for one of my favorite places in the world, Scott County, Virginia. When you travel across Scott County through South Coast, Virginia, you are going to find small...
And from that, we have cut some smaller videos. There's four different smaller videos that we have cut. And we're going to be running those for this next upcoming season.
Planning a day treat of weekend getaway with side vacation. Find your wonder love in Scott County. Located in the southwestern tip of Virginia, Scott County is the place to go for some down-home dining, one-of-a-kind shopping, and comfortable accommodations. Here in the heart of the Appalachian Mountains, you'll find tasty treats, watch history come alive, enjoy toe-tapping shows, marvel at exotic animals, and experience breathtaking natural wonders. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lot of time.
So this is the upcoming grant that I'm writing to see. Hopefully, we will get this grant. But we'll still have some money to do this even if we don't get the grant.
Find your wonder love in Scott County, Virginia. This beautiful Appalachian community is the place to go for tasty dishes and unique shopping. Try some down-home cooking at the local legend, Cuba's Drive-In. Indulge in delectable treats at the award-winning Family Bakery. Or take the Gupfester Ice Cream Challenge at Teddy's Restaurant. Scott County is your shopping destination for fashion, collectibles, and fun gifts at all of our one-of-a-kind shops. Discover Scott County, stay a week, a month, or a lot of time.
So the 30-minute video that I spoke about, we're going to be playing that in April and May on Heritage TV. And then we're also, that's also going to be on some streaming services with Spectrum. I don't exactly remember. I have it in my, I have it in my office where that's going to be played. But if you all have a chance, it's on our website, explorerscottcountingba.org. And Brittany Robertson, she did a great job with this. You know, she's, she'd never done anything like this. And she was pretty much a natural doing. So we have the grants that are coming up. I've talked to you about the ARCA grants and what we wanted to use that for advertising and product development. And I'll talk a little bit about that in just a minute. The 20,000 VTC event grant, we don't qualify for that grant. And that's because they are asking you for this to be a two-day event. And it has to bring in at least 20,000 people. So we don't have any events that need that. So we cannot qualify for that. So we can't apply. There is another 20,000 VTC MLP grant, which, the MLP grant is what we, what I've normally gotten. I'm not applying for that one. I am applying for the $20,000 VTC DMO grant. And that is like the other ones, that is a reimbursable grant. It's to have matching funds. So you had to have a $20,000 matching fund. They changed the parameters of the grants now, last year. During COVID, you didn't exactly have to have the matching grants. You had to have partners and you had to have letters from your partners supporting what you're doing in the grant. And I have, my grant is, it's written and it's ready to go. I'm just waiting on one of my partners to send me a letter. And we will get that submitted. And you'll know April 15th whether or not we have received that. And the votes for that will be used to run through, if we get it, to be run through a campaign, which is stay, stay a week, stay a month, stay a lot of time in Scott County. And it's, you know, just a general feel-good. And a large part of it is it's social media and then it's streaming. It's using the commercials and everything that we put together. Well, I didn't put them together, the agency put them together. But, so that's upcoming. And then I've talked to you all about the Virginia Drive 200 results. And in front of you there is the, if, if you want to go through and look at everything that was submitted, we ended up with 520 people, 520 responses. This is what, this is just the top takeaways from what the report showed. We had 22% of the tourists bid $500 or more. 31% stayed four or more days. 50% scored their visit to Scott County on a 1 to 10 scale as a 10. 38% had planned their vacation about six months ahead of time. You can see the top activities, the top places they stayed, top places that they've visited, and the restaurants. And we also, we did ask them, you know, what they would like to see us build. And, you know, the one thing that came up with an indoor, you know, indoor-outdoor center. Of course, I listened to everything else. And, you know, I'm not going to ask for any more money or anything like that. We could use a visitor center, and I'll talk to you about that. We made, I made a presentation to the EDA to see if we could perhaps use a piece of property right there that sits on the front end of Highway 2358, next to that old bank building, where the bank building was. And wanted to build something that, you know, 1,100 square foot building as a visitor center that looked something like this. You know, something in keeping with the general, you know, area and maybe something that looked a little bit better. And, you know, would kind of inspire people to improve their facades down that road. But unfortunately, we were told not this past week. And the EDA mainly said that they didn't think that that was a good spot. So, you know, I, it's just, we, we do, we do have a Plan B, but it's not, it's not to build, it's not to build a building. So, you know, I've looked at, looked at other locations down through there that, in my own personal opinion, would have been the best spot. But, you know, that was no. So, does anybody have any questions? Now, in the most perfect world, if you had all kinds of money, this is what I would tell you, what I would like for you to do, is to go on the brave property and build an indoor-outdoor center with an agricultural expo center. And you could do that, you could do that through grants. I think you, I think maybe you might even be able to put package, a package together of things that you need and put it up for a vote for your citizens. You know, there's, there's grants. And I did talk with Scott. Scott said that they had the funding, the funding was available to build that Ag Center, to build that agricultural expo center. So, you know, it's just kind of, it's kind of like, you know, if you're willing to explore and dream. But, you know, it's just me. So, you know, I'm just putting that back out there to you all. And I guess, I guess this is as good a time as any to tell you that my last day will be October 1st. I thought that it would be April 1st. But that's a little, that's a little soon. But more than likely, more than likely, it's going to be October 1st. It just seems, it just seems like every time I have a birthday, something new happens. So, you know, now I can't talk. Last year, last year, my back went out. So I'm just hoping to make it to October 1st. And maybe, you know, if things, maybe I can stay longer. I don't know. But that's what I'm setting my sights on.
Oh, I sure will hate to see you go. I assume you'll still be involved with tourism in Scott County in some, in some capacity?
No.
No? You're not going to, you're not a volunteer or anything?
No, we're moving to Australia.
Oh. Exciting.
I'm lying. No, we do have a daughter that's moving to Australia, good or not. So I think I can take along. But anyway, we are, just, just in case anybody asks you about this, we're doing an insert of this for National Tourism Week in the newspaper. And we're also doing a mailing so that the citizens know, you know, how tourism dollar flies, how the tourism money flows through the region and everything. And that, you know, it does make, it does make an impact. And it does, it does create revenue. So anyway, I will pass these and here is the, so, so I guess I'll do, I guess I'll do, have one more presentation and then it'll be, I still live in St. Louis. No, I'm not moving to Australia.
You don't know, you don't?
Yeah, well, I don't know. They have too many snakes.
They have Penderoos and things. I want to go. That's on my agenda to go.
Hey, you could, you and I can go. Because my husband won't fly that far.
Let's do it.
So when Carolyn moves, I think she's moving in Cheneau. So we'll go.
That's good to know.
After October 1st. Okay?
All right. Sounds great.
All right, Pam, wish you the best. And recommendations? One cup of hot water? One tablespoon of vinegar?
What type of water?
And two tablespoons of honey? And one tablespoon of lemon juice? Drink it three times a day.
Okay, thank you.
No liquor? This is what my grandfather always used to do, rock and roll. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brought you there. Now, we're, we don't have anything to close session.
No, but I do have one other thing.
Okay. Yeah?
We have some issues with the Board of Equalization. We had an alternate that was offered a full-time job last week. So she emailed me and told me she would not be able to participate. And one of our full-time members can't work it out with his schedule to participate. So we are down to no alternates because our alternate is having to work full-time with the Board of Equalization. So do you have a name that we could submit to the court for an alternate?
Anybody? I thought, I thought I could come up with anybody. The two that I did ask, or there, I mean, I asked others, but those two didn't. Do y'all have anybody? Anybody?
Are there any requirements for this one, like real estate or anything? No requirements, just citizen?
One of our real estate people is the one that can't participate. But I did ask him if he would be on call for, they have to go for commercial-type properties. And he agreed that, you know, he would do his best for that. So I would say no, no strings like that. And they would just, they would need to be approved by the court. And they would need to have the training, which is a couple hours, and then fill in as needed.
Anybody have anyone? You have anybody free that you can think of or... Lacy, you know, anybody? I'll hit everybody up. I'll ask everybody, you know?
Hard job. Yes.
Well, I don't know either. Don't want to say it, it's out there.
Will you keep working on it? Keep trying to think of somebody? And then give us authorization when you all come up with somebody to go to the court then and get them?
Can we vote and authorize that?
So we don't have to...
So that you, that you do it? I'll let you do it?
Yeah.
We're trying to motion authorize Sally to, we come up with a name to recommend them to court for approval. Do we have a motion to do that?
Somebody?
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Jeter, second. Paul Fairbough said aye.
Aye.
Aye, if I was a motion to have. All right, anything else?
That was all, please.
Okay, Mr. Jeter, have anything comments?
Just want to thank the staff for the good job they do. Brittany appreciates you.
Yeah, they do do. Mr. Tipton?
Yes, I want to also thank the staff for what they do. They don't get a lot of recognition. And I've mentioned this before, there's two locations on Highway 58. One is at Jane Hill. This will be a VDOT issue. We have work orders in now. They've come out at one location, I think, and they, they cut one tree down. But there's many trees that are on the bank that have washed around, around the roots and very visible. Some of them, you can see up and under the roots. And it's just a matter of time, short time, that those trees are going to just fall over with the roots and everything. The other, the other one is close to, on Highway 58, close to Brick Yard Gap. Actually, there were trees that fell there fairly recently. Two trees. And, and I think even others. And what they did, they just fell over with the roots and everything. And so I just hate to see a tree fall on a car or know of a tree falling on a car. These trees that did fall, they fell all the way across the road. And so these other trees that are, with the roots, or the water have washed around, it's just a matter of time. So it's a matter of safety issue. And I have talked to VDOT about it. And, and we've been talking back and forth for over a year. And it just seems like it's hard to get them to, to realize what really needs to be done there. I just hate for it to be a situation where a tree actually falls on a car and it causes a bad accident or maybe it lost a life.
I've seen trees along the highway recently that have fallen, just lying there. I mean, it's, it's really becoming a problem, I think.
Yeah, and that, where I'm describing also, there's no, if, if people could take a side road, I've had a lot of people call me, they would actually take the side road. But there is no other road. They have to travel the highway. And so it's the main corridor, you know, from Hiltons, well, actually all the way from Bristol. And so it's, it's a major issue. I've had a lot of people call me about it. But the response that I get is they can't cut a green tree, you know, or things of that nature. It's a tree that pretty much has to be rotten. I mean, why do we want to wait till a tree falls down, you know, first of all? But I think this is a matter of, where the water has eroded, the trees are up on the bank, they're actually leaning. You can see water underneath the roots. I mean, where the water has come under, underneath the roots. And it's just a matter of time. I mean, the root, everything is just going to topple over. Some have already.
Response I got from VDOT was they can't get nobody to take a contract to cut trees.
That's probably the biggest issue.
I've got a chainsaw.
Go to work.
Commercial project LLC.
They said they can't get nobody to even put in for it. Too much red tape, I reckon.
All right. Do you think that's it? Mr. Aaron?
Appreciate everybody. Ponderosa and the Gate Road. Ponderosa, I've talked about before. I think they actually did do some grading. But there needs to be some grain tiles. And they were supposed to maybe do a study about that. But I'd like to keep, keep that going. Loray Road, they are supposed to be doing a whole lot of work over there in the near future. So hopefully, they'll, they'll get that taken care of. The Gate Road, they did get some gravel, but it still needs to be graded. But again, the tile, the drain tiles, you know, I don't even know if there's any on the Gate Road. And the Gate Road connects 71 with Big Moxon in the Taylortown community there. But it, it needs some work. Snowflake Road, it's a, it's, I think it's a little over three miles. The whole thing needs, needs work. Of course, we, we talked about that a year ago, you know, when we all come up with the roads to go on the six-year plan. And, you know, we talked about the ones that didn't make that cut to put those on this year. Is that, so is, is VDOT going to talk to us about that?
Joey Mullins will be handling the six-year plan this year.
Okay.
I, I think they're behind on their six-year plans because a section of my road was supposed to be done in 2021. And it's not, I mean, done very good.
Well, I'm sure COVID had a lot to do with it, manpower and stuff like that. So maybe thanks for getting back a little bit normal. Maybe this year we'll see, see some changes. You talk about trees. I've talked to them about a tree on Snowflake Road. And I believe it takes an act of Congress, maybe even higher than that, to get a tree cut. It sounds like the same situation, water's running up underneath it. This one's going to fall on a house, you know, and, and plus across, across Snowflake Road. But the last I heard about that, the environmentalists had to look at it and the, the figure whether it needs to be cut or not. I don't know. I don't know if any of the rest of you got any calls. I, I'm sort of confused about the Board of Equalization. You know, I got a few calls, mostly people reaching out to me. They see me out and about talking about they had missed the date. You know, of course, the deadline was Friday. From these people, you know, they talked about that, some of them talked about that there was confusion about the, when the appraisal people had their meetings. Some people thought that was the Board of Equalization. Some people talked about the, they weren't able to get through. Said that the lines were busy. I don't, I was expecting people to be here. I, I don't know. I don't know it, you know? Everybody has a responsibility, you know, if, if you have a problem. But if, if, if there was a problem on the phone issue, if somebody wasn't able to get through, if it was busy, I, I have no idea. But I don't know if any of the rest of you talked to anybody about that or not. Of course, I, I spoke with Sally about it, you know? We, we could change that. Of course, it would take like a month, basically, to, we had to re-advertise, change those, that end and date. I did hear that the month of... date. Uh, I did hear that the month of March, April, there's very few, uh, that's made appointments in April. I did hear that. I don't know if that's true or not. Uh, but it, to me, it seems like something, something happened with the connection with the people and I don't, I don't know what exactly that is. This is my first time. Did, would, did we do things the exact way, the exact same ways we did six years ago?
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me address that and I'm going to get front of you Mike and do my part if you don't mind. Had an email, I talked to this gentleman and I told him I'd read it. He wanted to be here and he said, I'm asking for the county to please extend the time period to appeal the tax increase at the Equalization Board. I learned today that the timeframe had closed for four months. I made several attempts to call, but was not able to get through to anyone. I cannot attend. He won't be here today. He had Dr. Pullman nine o'clock. Anyway, he's asking that, uh, if we could to, uh, be his voice, if we could to, to change that. And in conversation with our county attorney, I mean, we said that, uh, actually the, the date was, was January twenty-fourth, but we had to give a date at the time to the courts. Then we, we changed that to, uh, February the twenty-fifth. And I don't think we should go back in. And I talked to the lady that's taking care of that and, and she had like thirty people. She had a list there. She showed me that it was trying to get an appointment. Uh, that's thirty, uh, how many that actually got through. At the end of last week, there was nobody calling. The, the phone should not have been busy. Maybe it's miscommunication. It's sort of like the restaurant tax had people call saying, well, they didn't know if they were going to do that. They would have been here. I don't know how you can make the public more aware. It's on our website. It's in the county paper. We do, we advertise it here. We talk about it here. And then we're, they're not getting the communication like they should and they want us to change things. And I don't think we should because we, we need to stick. I, I hate they couldn't get through. I really do. But the change in ordinance that we put in place, I think, would be setting a precedent that we should not be doing. We said it, we said it. It's law. It's in stone. Yeah, we could go in, do the advertising process, public hearing and all that. We could. But anyway, this guy here, uh, his name is Jeff Starnes and I hate it for it. I really do. He's got, he's got a, a, a pretty good concern. But still, we, we put these things in place, but deadlines in place and we get it out every way that we know how, that we possibly put it out there. I don't take the county paper. I don't look at this or that. Well, you know, you've got to make yourself available to, to look at things and if it's, you're that concerned, you need to know, uh, when these things are happening. You get a mail order, say what it is. We changed that from January twenty-fourth to February the twenty-fifth, another month. And so, and I hate they didn't get through. But in conversation with, uh, Ms. Kegley, I don't think we should change that ordinance to put it in place and so that's what it should be.
What was the first date?
The, the date we gave the courts in the, in the beginning was January twenty-fourth.
The ending date?
That was the, yes, the appointment, uh, to get an appointment. But we knew that was not going to be correct. Probably put everything together.
So, so that was the date that was on the mailer?
Yeah, on, in the beginning, yes. And then we extended it to February the twenty-fifth. So, anyway, and I, I know you got the calls. I've got the calls, uh.
I, well, I don't, I'm not so sure that we'd really be changing the precedence if, if, if the people didn't really get that. If we changed the, we changed the dates and the people didn't really know, I think Supervisor Herron has a valid concern there, what he's talking about.
What's definitely a concern?
That, that, that would be my concern too. So we didn't start taking appointments until February the fourteenth?
Right, so which, which was beyond the date of the, the letter.
Yep.
So, and, and I, I agree that everybody doesn't get the paper, everybody is not on social media. And I agree with you too, Danny, that people should make themselves available, that, uh, you know, try to find out.
We also supplied an email address that was in the mailer, if I'm not mistaken. I know it was in the ad where people could send in their email questions to get an appointment. And we had several that did that that were not local. We had people that own property from Blacksburg and Florida and different places and, you know, they reached out by different means to get their appointments sent.
Well, let me ask you this. Do we know who, who the thirty people are that are on?
Well, that's, she had three pages. I was break the scan. I didn't look at any names, but she had two hundred and nine pages of names on it that people were requesting.
So, so then it sounds like we do know who those thirty people are?
Yeah, yeah, she has them written down. So, anyway.
And it sounds like some of these people have tried, if not all of them people have tried.
They tried after. They tried this week. They didn't. I mean, last week was the deadline. That was caused. They got this week trying to get an appointment. First, these things are put in place by, by law. We got to do this.
I understand that. We, we changed the date though. That's the point I'm trying to make.
Well, we had to because we, we needed a date at the time to submit to the court. That's all we come up with and we extended it a month. So we've already extended it once.
Right, well, I understand that.
Basically, they got a concern. Some of them, some within the hospital, some out of the country. But, you know, I understand it. But we just, I, I mean, to me, we, we set this and I just don't like, once we do, uh, do this, to go back and change it because of a few that, uh, or what, and they have, I'm sure they have legitimate reasons. By the procrastination, I don't know why they, why they didn't get in.
A lot of people might have got confused, I think, so, on the, about the appointment. That you couldn't get an appointment after they started doing things. Uh, I guess it's probably what the problem is mostly. But, uh, I'm kind of like Marshall. I think that people are, if somebody's up our answerphone, they ought to go ahead and take appointments if they've got appointments available, is my opinion. Because, uh, you're paying somebody to sit their answerphone. If they're answering the phone, they ought to go ahead and give them an appointment, give this appointment available.
They got slots available.
They've got plenty of slots available, is what I heard. But.
But still, we'd have to change ordinance. Is that right, Ms. Kegley?
To do it the right way, yes.
Well, what's the thoughts on this? If, if we have thirty people that we already know?
That number's thirty. I don't know how many. Well, I have to be guessing with the pages scanned.
If we open that up, is that not going to open up? I mean, we can't just say, you thirty people that were on that list.
You'd have to re-advertise it.
You have to re-advertise it. Let everybody have the same opportunity.
Right.
So I don't think that.
I can see both sides of it. I really can. I mean, if, you know.
I mean, if we do that, I mean, are we opening? You know, a floodgate kind of thing. I don't know. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know what the right answer is.
I just don't understand. You know, six years ago, I mean, I've been told that there was a whole lot more appointments made. And I would have thought that everything would have been full this go around with as much change that's happened. You know, people's taxes going up a hundred. I've even heard a thousand percent. I mean, you know, uh, uh, how, how can it, how could you not have more, more appointments? I just don't, I, I don't understand that.
I was there the first day to get them started when they first started taking calls and the phone calls were back to back to back.
Yeah.
But I kept in check with them over the two-week period and last week, toward the end of the week, they didn't have many calls. She said they would sit forty-five minutes and the phone wouldn't ring. And then, you know, a couple would ring together. But the, you know, the bulk of the calls came the first week and then trickled off through last week. But there's a lot of people that have appointments. The schedule is nine AM. You've got three people at nine AM. At nine fifteen, you've got another parcel for three people. So when you're thinking three people for eight hours a day, every fifteen minutes, for three, four weeks solid, that's a lot of people.
Right.
So even, and the block of time was longer this year than six years ago. Like, we had our date advertised as April twenty-ninth. Last year, it started a lot later than February, or six years ago. So you've got more time spread out. So your appointments aren't necessarily going to be completely full like they were last time because you had a shorter period.
Well, you're asked odds. I mean, we, that was my comment's part and I was going to bring it up to read that email. I told Mr. Starnes I would. I did, so. But they had eleven, what, four tenths of the eleven days to get their appointments made and I hated that they didn't. I, I did.
That's sort of what I was doing too, is just letting, being known, you know, the people's concerns. It just, I don't know. It, to me, it, there was some confusion. That, that's my, I guess. And I don't know, you know, I was told that when they called, the line was busy. I mean, that's all. I have no idea. I didn't even realize there was any, anything happening until Monday. That's, uh, you know, that, that was after the deadline. It already happened.
I would say they just didn't realize the deadline.
Yeah, so they just missed, missed that.
That's my opinion.
Well, how can we make people worry? I mean, how do you get the information to them? I mean, how do you do it?
Well, you know, a lot of people, these older people like me, we don't fool with the computer and all that stuff unless we have to. And, uh, don't, I don't do Facebook. I don't do any of that. So I probably wouldn't have known it if I hadn't been here.
Yeah.
Because I, I've got more to do than play on Facebook.
Well, how do we, I mean, how do we communicate? I mean, how, how else we do everything required? And even going on beyond that, I mean, how do we, how do we communicate that to make sure people meet these deadlines?
Just for clarification, it was on TV on channel thirty. It was on social media. It was a big ad in the newspaper. It was posted at the library, the courthouse, and every voting precinct in the county had the same notice posted. So I don't know what other means there would be that you could communicate with the citizens. Unless you send them an emergency alert through nine-one-one, reverse nine-one-one that says, here's your dates.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, the dates should have been on the ticket when they sent the tickets out. And they sent you that ticket on what your taxes going up, the dates for the Equalization Board should have been on there then. Everybody got that and everybody looked at it.
We didn't have clerical staff. Nobody applied when we advertised in December for the clerical staff. So we had to do like you all did with the Board of Equalization. We had to reach out and try to get people to volunteer to do that. So that's why the January wasn't ready.
Yeah, I understand that. But that's where it should have been.
But there, the phone numbers were there. So they could have called, you know, and kept calling until they got help with somebody. I mean, they've had since last year when we got our taxes.
They wouldn't have waited answerphone to hear this.
I know.
There was a message on that one after the dates and the time to call back.
I don't know. A lot of citizens going to be upset and I don't blame them.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I don't know how to reach them. I mean, how do, how do you get the information to them?
I'm going to say this, you all probably alike when I say it, but I think reassessment for the mail board on reassessment. They went too high. You brought four hundred thousand percent. You're going too high. I don't care what property it is in Scott County.
Well, the thing that they use, they use the information the county gives them as forward. I mean, they throw out the highest sale price of the bill, extreme loan, and they go for what, what the property's going for. So really, they use the numbers that they were given by the county.
Yeah, but Danny, none of that property would have sold for what it does and letting people moving out of here from New York, New Jersey, California and all that place. None of this property would have sold for prices. It's so far here lately.
And those, and the people here are not going to leave. You know, they're, they're, they're here and they're stuck with us to pay the bill and, and.
It's, it's going to put a hardship on a lot of these old people. It's on.
Y'all remember the meeting we have with them? They, you know, they, they showed us, uh, some of the properties of what they were praised for and what they sold for. It's that value, you know, what they sold for. And some of them, you know, it was tremendously, a much higher one. I remember one oh seven, it went one eighty-seven. That counts that, you know. So that's what they got to go buy is the number that they're, they give to, you know, uh, property selling board. Mine went up a bunch too. I mean, I, mine went up a lot. So, anyway.
You used to talk about elderly people. I mean, it, it's going to affect everybody. I mean, not, not just elderly. I mean, you know, somebody trying to make it on, on just a, a farm, if they're farming full-time, you know, if you was paying five thousand dollars for your taxes and then it goes up to ten thousand dollars, that's a, that's a big, big deal. And I've heard several stories like that, you know, it, uh, and, and I guess my prob- if, if there was any hint of confusion and the tax situation the way it is now, I, I feel like we, we need to give it another chance. Because that's, that, that's just my, my opinion. You all been, some of you been here longer. They may know more about it. Freddie, I know that puts a strain on, on the administrative part of it because that prolongs, I'm sure, uh, on you trying to balance a budget, uh, you know, not, not knowing, you know, what you're even going, what the numbers are and, uh.
We had a presentation here today about what it's going to do at the courthouse. The school system, another one point two million this year. Uh, everything is going to, and we got to pay for it. And so, you know, it can run back down to those people after they're, uh, getting it done, paying their taxes, is going to be paying the bill. And so.
We've got to come up with some sort of a, uh, something that instead of waiting six years to get that big amount, we, we've got to do something every year. I, I feel like it. And I, I don't know if, what the answer is to that. But instead of waiting, you know, uh, six years and really in, in this case, we've waited twelve years. Because it didn't really, you know, we didn't even get enough to pay for the assessment last time. Uh, so.
Alright.
Anyway, that's how.
Any thoughts here? You'll do nothing or change the, give a change of dates to call you or make an appointment?
I, I feel like we should extend it.
Okay.
That's my, my feelings.
Anyone else? You make a form of a motion?
Uh, I, I might add a motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any discussion?
Can we pause for a second? I mean, I, I, before we vote, I mean, I just want to understand if we do that. I'm just trying to understand how that's going to affect what we are saying here. I mean, I mean, and I get it. I do. I understand. I just, I don't want to put us into a position where.
We're changing rules to suit, I mean, to me, I'm not, you know, I, we're changing rules to, to, to change, to please a few. I'm about to know not to do it. Uh, because I think we, if you change the rules, and I, I said thirty, it may not have been, maybe twenty. I don't know how many. They were spaced out. So I just shed on a legal pad. Uh, but if we change the rules to suit for a handful of people, I think it's, it's a mistake. And I know there's hardship, stuff happens and, uh, and I hate that. I, I really do. But if we change the rules to, for a handful of people, I don't know how many, how many people that they have got in. It's a lot apparently. But to me, to, to do that, it's, uh, I just don't think we should. But now we got a motion in a second. We'll vote here in a second. I'm, I'm, I'm before we vote, I'm about to know not to do it. So.
Really torn. I'll be honest. I'm really torn.
I am too, but it's, you know. And confirm with Sally, our county attorney, about doing this, uh, I'm just, I can go either way on it. I really can. I'm not that much against doing it. It's just that I just don't like changing the rules in the middle of, uh, we're right in the middle of, we're in the middle of getting this done.
You do need to watch on setting precedents. I understand that. I, I do.
That's my concern. I mean, and I, and I mean, on some form, and I don't want to, I'm going to say this and somebody's going to call me, but there's a personal accountability piece to it. And I, and I, and I understand there are situations, extenuating circum- circumstances. And, and I fully, I'm going to, I'll probably eat my words on that, but that's okay. But I mean, there are implications. There are consequences to action and then also consequences to inaction. So I don't. I don't know. I don't know.
The point we're taking, I mean, all of you, you're here for a reason and so is to do what you think is right. And I think that's what we're doing here right now.
You know, however, however the vote ends up, we need to handle this. You know, whoever's here in six years needs to do maybe a little something different, like Daryl talked about when they sent the letter out, if, if, if those dates could have been on there. You know, just something. I don't, I don't know. Uh, that's, but ha- however. You know, just something. I don't, I don't know. That's, but however it goes, you know, I feel like we need to. Because, you know, I know you mentioned all those places. Of course, I wouldn't, I wasn't looking to talk to anybody, you know. If I would have been looking to talk to somebody about my taxes, yeah, I would have probably went out and tried to find some. But, you know, just, just general, I wouldn't have said it either.
Well, they could have called the county office here and they could have told them. If they're, they're concerned, you know, why didn't they call and find somebody? I mean, so I'm not saying this now just on their part, but it could be because they procrastinate. I mean, I don't know if people wait till the last day, the last hour, the last minute, April fifteenth to pay their taxes. So, you know, wait until the last second to do it for whatever reason. But anyway, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'm very vocal, say no.
Wow.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Maybe show hands because that's hard to tell.
No.
No.
It's four to three. Guys, I get your point. I really hear. So that's what you're here for.
I do too. But I'm like Stephanie, a personal responsibility. You know, there were numbers wrong there with the, the taxes that were sent out. And, you know, everybody should have gotten involved. They had a problem.
I'd have got, I'd have got a hold of somebody. So I hate it for them, but again, like I said, you know, but anyway. All right. Mr. Ricky in for me.
I'm going to bring in something that's a little more pleasant, maybe. Lana Mullins was supposed to be here today, and evidently something's happened that she couldn't be. And what she was going to do was present a profile report of the DSS Department of Social Services. And I have it here. I'm on that board. And it won't take but two or three minutes to go over some stuff that I think you'll really be interested in. The population in Scott County, this was for twenty-twenty-one, is twenty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine. Households below poverty are forty-seven percent. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, twenty percent. One thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three homes. I'm going to hurry and go through this and then just leave it here for you if you want to see it afterwards. Number of people under sixty-five in Scott County who are uninsured is one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one. That's ten percent of people under sixty-five are uninsured, and I think that's pretty good. The fourth thing here is non-marital births and teen births. Twenty-five percent of our children live in single-parent households. Like I say, you can go over this a little later if you want to, and I'm going to hurry on through it. The number of clients served by the state in twenty-twenty-one who received, and don't ask me the names of these acronyms, but SNAP, T-A-N-A-F, TANF, or Medicaid, were seven thousand, eight, eighty-nine. Now, the thing I think will really stand out for you is the total amount of money that was spent on social services in Scott County for twenty-twenty-one was sixty-seven million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Wow.
The total spent by our locality was seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two. That's pretty impressive. This is, this is a great board to be on. It's, it's very rewarding. You deal with child placements in homes. And you deal with just everything with kids in the schools. And it's one of the most interesting. And then, to me, it's very beneficial. So I just wanted to present that, and I'll leave that laying here if you want to look over it a little bit before you leave.
That other money, Ms. Ricky, has come from State and FED.
State and FED, yes. Waterman.
So the FED does contribute.
Yes, they do. The other thing I want to mention.
And one question, does that include the people that Apka helps?
No.
No.
Should be different numbers.
I think it is, yes.
They have a lot of people, too, with the winterization and all kinds of stuff.
They've worked together on the heating and cooling assistance with social services, but their Apka numbers should be separate from social services.
Deal with a lot of people, a lot of kids. Another thing that I want to bring up, Mr. Mann is on the Southwest Virginia Workforce Development Board. There's a meeting tomorrow. Frida and I are going to attend. Danny has something else to do. But what is interesting about this, I should have been in on this to start with because I don't really agree with it. Maybe I shouldn't say that, say that. But what we're going to talk about tomorrow is three hundred, three thousand, three hundred X offenders are going to be released in Southwest Virginia between now and July twenty-twenty-two. Quote, probation and parole offices in Southwest Virginia are currently working with three thousand, three hundred X offenders, releasing now, between now and July twenty-twenty-two, while an additional four thousand X offenders are scheduled for release across Virginia this summer. This mass release is due to a change in how the Virginia Department of Corrections calculates good conduct allowances or time that reduces an inmate's sentence. That's, that's a lot of people being released. What Frida and I are going to go tomorrow, I don't know what input I'll have on this because I said, like I said, I like to be in on the decision.
You're going in my stead, so you can.
But anyway, this is, this meeting tomorrow is to help to find affordable housing, transportation, and jobs for the people that are coming out of jails. Southwest Virginia will soon receive a large influx of these returning citizens. And this boost to our population can be a windfall to businesses needing workers. And probably a windfall for the region, for us as far as the regional jail goes. But we're going to go tomorrow to this meeting, and if you've got any thoughts, any questions, it's beyond the point of, do you want this done? It's to where it's going to happen. Thirty-three hundred prisoners are getting out. And we're going to go talk about how to take care of them. It's basically what it is. Right? Mr. Chairman?
That's the way I, way I think. What happened, I was in a Clio meeting about three weeks ago in Russell County. And it came up, and, but we were all kind of deer in the headlights when we were talking about it. And I think this came from the Department of Corrections. I talked to our local elected people, and they weren't aware of it. So I'm thinking the Department, Department of Corrections did this unbeknownst to our elected state officials because they, it says right on there, Department of Corrections, it's their, they're recalculating, good time served. Even thought their lax marijuana laws might be a part of it. I don't know. We did talk to Attorney General. It was up there in Richmond. He knew about it and briefly discussed it with us that it was happening. But, but I think the Department of Corrections is responsible for it. I first was kind of irritated. Some people didn't know about it. They should. But I think that's where the recalculating, I don't know how that works. I don't know. But anyway, it's going to happen.
I think it came from the previous administration, from those guidelines, probably.
Well, it happened in two thousand, during the session in two thousand twenty-one.
Right.
That's what I understood. It should have gone into effect last year. Not, not we get into that why it didn't go into effect last year. Think what happened last year, you might have figured out yourself, but anyway. But the Department of Corrections, I think, is the one that did this. And I'm assuming nothing's going to start late to people because they, they weren't aware of it. Thank you for bringing that up. It needs to be talked about. The people and the counties know about it. And I hope they don't reoffend when they get out. I don't feel good about it, to be honest with you. I don't. But anyway, hopefully, they will be better citizens when they get out and try to mingle and contribute to society. Thanks, sir.
Does it say what their crimes were? Was it say?
The way they told us, nonviolent offenders, meaning probably drug conviction. That was what they told us, all right, would be nonviolent offenders. Hopefully, that's the case. Anyway, they'll know tomorrow, about tomorrow when Frida and Mr. Ricky goes and meets with them. And the one that's, what is a reentry program, how they addressed it to us, the Clio Board, was to come up with a program, a reentry program, get them back in the workforce, try to do workforce development.
And here we have military people that are getting out. And infiltrating back into our society. And these people, y'all, have defended our nation, right?
Yes.
So it's a big issue.
A lot of it kicked out because it wouldn't be vaccinated or.
I'm like, yes, I have an issue with it too.
I do too. But let's let it go. I just, I don't get on the, get started, given how I am.
One other thing I'd like to mention is, is real quickly, I want to thank Marshall and Danny and also John Kilgore and Lynn Fassler. Went to Richmond with them last week, and they took care of it. We took shuttles most places. I was real nervous about going as far as my walk.
You done great.
Places. But, but I really enjoyed it. We met Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears, and she is a great lady. She's enjoyed or saw her own news, last night, national news. And Attorney General Miora is, and Dean Lynch, we met with him, went out to eat with our local legislators. And it was a good trip. I encourage the rest of you, if you can, to go on that trip sometime. We had two excellent drivers on the way up, I understand.
I drove part of the way back. I was loud.
So, but I want to thank you all for kind of taking care of me. If I was walking down the street, somebody'd ease up and say, if you start the trip, grab me.
You know, I appreciate you. Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
I've had a really busy month, but most of my issues didn't involve the entire county. It was just questions about personal issues within the county. One thing did, it does involve the whole county, which is a concern to me, and it's the trash along our roads. And I got a complaint about Highway Fifty-Eight, and I talked with Ms. Starnes, and she had somebody go out there and pick that up, but it was really bad. I mean, there was trash all the way down Paramounton. It was just, it was amazing. I thought, why do these people do that? But I've been noticing throughout the county, I mean, we do really have a trash problem along our roads. And I just wish there was some way that could be addressed and fixed because it's really sad, and it looks bad in our county. You come in our county and you've got trash along our roads. It's just not a good sign. So that's concerning. But I really appreciate Ms. Kegley and Ms. Starnes. They've helped me a lot this month about different issues.
Ms. Hood, a couple of years ago, we, the board established April as Awareness Month. And every year, we try to do some sort of education. We did billboards before. We go talk to schools and things like that. So I asked the board to be thinking about something you'd like to see happen during Awareness Month, that we can educate people. The problem is a give-a-hoot problem. How do you get people to do that is the question.
I have a lot of problems. People pick up trucks with, get more out of the back. They don't secure the load, and that's like a lot of, a lot of country.
Just a real quick response to what Supervisor Hood was talking about. We have someone, and I'm not going to call their name and how, because I haven't talked to them about it. But they're out there on Highway Fifty-Eight to see this person picking up trash. And you know the truck, you know, that's probably involved. I'm not going to describe it. But just want to give a shout out to them. Appreciate, you know, what they're doing, you know, to help that. But you're right, it is a problem. And so, as Bill mentioned, next month is, you know, we, the Awareness Month, you know, in terms of this. So let's think of something that can be creative and helping and getting the word out there and that people would get involved and keep our county clean, you know, as we would love for it to be. It's our county.
Yeah. Ms. Ruby?
I thank you, everybody. I had some, I have put in some V-Dog orders. Sent some phone calls, or maybe there are some emails on the phone. Have put emails to them on roads, some trees, some drainage issues. That's about it. I have nothing else.
All right. All righty. I think we're ready to wrap things up. Anything else from anyone else? The departmental staff, sadly, about everything. When's our next meeting? April what?
Six.
Six. Okay. All righty, you voted committed. When will they be meeting? Or do I get?
Maybe late March.
Late March, okay.
Not earlier.
All right, we will turn to next one. Everybody have a good day.
I just want to remind everybody that Jackie Prision is out on leave. So if you have V-Dog issues, let me know. And I can get in touch with.